City Hall and Tampa City Council. Let's see, we would like to call this meeting to order. Chairman, or Mr. Maniscalco, Councilman Maniscalco, you have the invocation.
Thank you very much. Today's, today our guest for the invocation is a senior policy advisor with Holland and Knight's Public Policy and Regulation Practice Group and is the co-chair of the firm's Florida Government Advocacy Team, but more importantly, Governor Martinez served as mayor of Tampa from nineteen eighty, I'm sorry, nineteen seventy-nine to nineteen eighty-six. Then he was elected governor of Florida and served from nineteen eighty-seven to nineteen ninety-one, and was then appointed under President George H.W. Bush from nineteen ninety-one to nineteen ninety-three as the drug czar for the United States. So it's my honor at this time to welcome Governor Martinez to give the invocation, and please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. Let us bow our heads. Almighty God, as we begin the process of deliberating the people's business, let's bless the members of the city council with wisdom, that they engage in dialogue in an informative way, that there is no hostility as we serve the people of the city of Tampa, that we act in a fashion that all benefit from your actions, particularly those who are vulnerable and not able to speak for themselves. This city has been blessed with great leadership, including the current members of this city council. We ask that you continue to give them wisdom, that they continue to serve in a very honest and deliberate way, that they put people first, not themselves, and at the end of each day of service, that they thank God that they live here in the city of Tampa. Amen.
Amen.
Flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Governor.
So, Governor, would you prefer Governor or Zoll?
Well, my wife still calls me Bobby.
Okay.
I've tried to get her to say Bob after seventy years, but I've not succeeded. So anywhere from Bobby to Bob to mayor, whatever.
It's a pleasure.
Don't call me Robert, because nobody calls me that, and I won't answer if you call me Robert.
Well, it's a pleasure having you back in Old City Hall today.
Thank you, appreciate it. You all have a great session.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Okay, we'd like to have a roll call, please.
Miranda.
Here.
Maniscalco.
Here.
Herta.
Here.
Vera.
Carlson.
Here.
Quinn Dinnick.
Here.
We have a physical form.
Councilman Vera is running slightly behind. He should be here any moment. Okay, I'd like to have a motion to receive and file the minutes from the regular session held on September fourth, twenty twenty-five, and the evening session held September eleventh, twenty twenty-five. I have a motion from Councilman Miranda, a second from Councilman Maniscalco. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. The ayes have it unanimously. Thank you very much. Okay, let's go through some housekeeping on the agenda. We've got several. I've got a walk-on, which you guys should get a copy of, it's in front of you, I believe they distributed. And I would suggest that we place that after the consent agenda items, and that would, after item number forty-seven. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion from Councilman Carlson, a second from Councilman Miranda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. The ayes have it. Okay, item number sixty-nine, over request to move that to a time certain after lunch at one-thirty.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilwoman Hertek, a second from Councilman Wido Maniscalco, and Mr. Shelby.
What item number was that again?
That would be items sixty-nine. It's a motion from Councilman Vera.
Just a reminder, counsel, you also have the hearing at one-thirty, so this will precede the hearing.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. The ayes have it unanimously. Thank you. Okay, we have a request from Abby Feely to continue item seventy-one to October twenty-third.
So moved.
Okay.
We have a motion from Councilman Maniscalco, a second from Councilman Miranda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. The ayes have it unanimously. Let's see, written staff report, presented to date to be determined, item seventy-three. We have a request to continue that to a date to be determined.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilwoman Hertek, a second from Councilman Miranda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. The ayes have it unanimously. We have a request on item seventy-seven to move it to November twentieth.
So moved.
We have a motion from Councilman Maniscalco, a second from Councilman Miranda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. The ayes have it unanimously. We have a request to move item seventy-eight to October ninth from Councilwoman Vera. A motion from Councilman Miranda, a second from Councilman Maniscalco. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. The ayes have it. Thank you. Staff reports, I believe, number seventy, Brandon will be here to do a presentation for your request.
Yes.
Okay, very good. How else are we doing on staff reports? Anything else? Any other notes?
Sixty-six and sixty-seven.
Do you want staff?
I don't know that we need staff, but.
I'm good without them.
Okay. Sixty-six, sixty-seven, we do not need staff, so we'll get, put that in the receive and file business, okay?
Actually, you know those resolutions? You can take it up after the consent.
Okay. We'll take it up after consent, no staff, okay? Let's see, we talked about.
No for sixty-eight.
No for, no staff for sixty-eight, okay.
Sixty-nine is time certain, and then seventy.
Seventy?
Seventy-two. We need to, this is our discussion, so it needs to stay.
Okay. Seventy-two, got it, okay. Very good.
Can we move to receive and file?
We can't yet, we still need public comment.
Yeah.
For the written?
Not for the written staff reports.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So a motion from Councilman Maniscalco, a second from.
From seventy-four through seventy-six?
Seventy-four through seventy-six, yes. Who's the second?
I'll second.
Second from Councilwoman Hertek to continue, to receive and file items seventy-four, seventy-five, and seventy-six. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. The ayes have it. Thank you.
Approve the agenda and the addendum?
Okay, we have a motion to approve the agenda and the addendum from Councilman Maniscalco, a second from Councilman Miranda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. The ayes have it. Very good. The agenda has been approved. Very good. Okay, so staff reports. Chief Bennett.
Morning, counsel. John Bennett, chief of staff. Good morning to our public. Item sixty-five, administrative update, offering two three-minute opportunities for transparency to the public. The first one is, as you know, we changed our agenda management system from sire to OnBase not too long ago, and our TNI staff, technology and innovation staff have been importing about four million records from sire into OnBase, and so they want to give a short demo to the public and the council about how accessible those former records are. So that'll just be a quick virtual presentation. Secondly, I heard a briefing recently that I think would appeal to the public, and this is something Councilman Miranda's been talking about for some time. When a member of the public purchases a residence and they find out after the fact that there was unpermitted work, it creates a significant challenge for them, and so what we had realized is that we've been sending our Excela records, which is our permitting platform, over to the property appraisers' office for some time. You can access all those permits through the property appraiser, which people tend to go to, more so than to go backcheck on Excela. So they're going to give a demonstration for the public, so if you're purchasing a home and somebody says, I have a new hot water heater, a new roof, you can go to the property appraisers and see if those were permitted to make sure that you're buying something that's already been pre-approved. So though J.C. Hutchinson, our chief building officer, will give another virtual demo for about three minutes, barring questions from council.
Thank you. We look forward to the presentations. Appreciate it. Thank you. Councilman Miranda.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Chairman. Mr. Chief of Staff, I agree with that. However, there's got to be a way that we can simulate that and send it to different people that do that kind of work, like the property appraisers' office has it. You can go in there and go into the files and look at it, like all the legal firms or whatever. Just send a notice to them, a kind notice that you can do that now, so that when they sell a house, we get void of all the problems that we have.
I think after this demo, it'd be worth a partnership in communications between both agencies to share that to the real estate community.
And I want to thank the administration very much for doing that.
Yep, it was, it was recognized as a good opportunity. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you very much. Now we are going to move into the commendations and presentation mode. Deanna Faggart, are you on? There you are. Now I see you.
Don't leave me up here alone. Good morning, Deanna Faggart, Director of Purchasing for the City of Tampa.
So nothing's getting purchased this morning, I can tell.
So I have with me a large segment of our staff, but not everyone, so we do have representation at the office, but, you know, I appreciate the concern.
I know I said your name, but could you start with your name for the records?
Yes, Deanna Faggart.
Thank you.
Yes. So we are here today just to acknowledge the purchasing department. The team behind me works very hard every day, and the National Procurement Institute has given us the achievement of excellence in procurement for the nineteenth year in a row. This award is intended to demonstrate that we are, that we are demonstrating professionalism, innovation, best practices. Every year, the criteria changes, so it's not just, you know, resubmit the same application. We have to go through a long process of documenting everything that we do, different, you know, just progressive improvements over time, right? So today, I wanted to allow staff to introduce themselves, but I'm going to start with Michelle Blizzard, who is my executive aide, who is the one who compiles that application for us every year and spends a lot of time on that, works very hard.
Hello. Good morning.
Good afternoon.
Well, you don't want to come up and be, or I guess maybe they'll capture the group of you guys on camera, unless you want to come up and say something.
Do you want to come where you can be seen?
Yes.
And it's new high-definition TV, so it really zooms in on you two.
Right. Yes. No, you're good.
All right. Yvette Rosario.
Hi, Yvette.
Happy New Year, McGee.
Missy Campaniano.
Stephanie Douglas.
Chelsea Logan.
Jill Elder.
Michelle Stavas.
Cassidy Baker.
Kristi Machewski.
Aaron Ellis.
Ariane Cora.
Andrew Welch.
Cheryl Aldridge.
So this team represents our procurement team, as well as inventory, and we just appreciate the acknowledgement and the opportunity to come up and brag a little bit.
Councilman Miranda.
No, I just want to say thank you. I know your job is not easy, and I can see why you do such an excellent job, because you have excellent employees behind you, and no chief could be a chief unless somebody's holding them up, and I want to say, not, not, not in that way, but in the right way, say thank you all for what you do every day. You know, it's not easy to get all those things that come in on bids, and you have to check if they have the equipment, have the equipment, are they certified, insurance, or everything is piled into one. So it's not that, just say, oh, this one takes it. No, it's not that easy, and we want to thank you very much, or the whole staff, the city of Tampa, the people here, what you do on a daily basis. Congratulations.
Councilwoman Hertek.
And I want to echo the congratulations. Nineteen years in a row is a really big deal, and I love this particular award that says, you know, you have to look for something new every year, and so it really keeps you focused on every area, because it seems like you don't probably know what's coming and what you have to do. So that's a real testament to the, just the ability of your entire staff, and it's really wonderful. Thank you all for coming down this morning. It gets really exciting, and you should be very proud.
Well, on behalf of Tampa City Council and the folks that, you know, churn out this money, we are very appreciative of the staff and how responsible you are and the amount of trust that we place in every one of you for your excellence, and it's nice always to be recognized, one outside and from within, and know that, I know, I share the sentiment of everybody here on council of our appreciation for everything you all do, and the folks that are not here today, we appreciate you as well.
Yes, we do.
Chief Bennett, would you like to say something?
I would. Thank you. Thanks for the moment and the privilege to recognize this group. I want to tell you, Deanna competed for this position about two years ago. Mr. Spearmann, who was our elongated director, retired, and I want to tell you, a year ago, coming up recently, this team worked tirelessly around the hurricane to bring in supplies under tremendously difficult conditions twice in a row. So they did, they slept in the EOC, they just constantly worked on procuring things during that emergency, and they did an absolutely amazing job. And secondly, I want to thank council for recently trusting them to elevate some of the procurement standards and report transparently back to council in that space, because it helped manage their workload to continue to do things under other unique conditions like tariffs and increases and all of that. So again, thank you, council, for collaborating with us and working with this staff under these conditions. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so we, next is the Florida Department of Transportation has agreed to provide an update on the activities within the city of Tampa, and I see our FDOT representative and our mobility guy out back there. Hey, mobility guy.
Good morning, counsel. Brandon Campbell, Mobility Department. And I just wanted to introduce Brian Hunter. I know he's not a stranger to this body, but he is here to present on behalf of FDOT on several topics that are a direct result of interactions and requests by you all. So just wanted to say that they are, they've been very responsive to some of the specific information requests brought forth by you in this particular setting, as well as great partners with us. Our systems interface all across the city in some very obvious places, like interstate ramps, but all across the roadway network itself. FDOT also administers a lot of federal funds through the local agency program to fund construction on a lot of our city of Tampa-owned roadways. So they've been great, great partners and continue to collaborate and cooperate with us, you know, every week, a lot of times daily, and we really appreciate their support. So Brian Hunter has a few things to update you on, and I will turn the microphone over to him.
Good morning, Brian.
Good morning, councilmembers. So I just have a couple of projects we're gonna.
You have to start with your name, even though we introduced you.
Oh, Brian Hunter with the Florida Department of Transportation. So just update you all on a couple of projects that we have going on. Like Brandon said, every single one of these has required significant coordination with the city of Tampa staff, and we really appreciate the professionalism and ease with which it is to coordinate with them. So the first one that we recently completed was the Doyle Carlton to Tampa sidewalk connection. I believe this request came out of Councilmember Hertak's office, and it was an idea she presented to us, and it made a whole lot of sense, so we're glad we got that and we were able to put it in. And that is just north of the I-275 ramp that goes to Doyle Carlton. There, we're connecting Tampa Street to the Waterworks Park area. We also put in a pedestrian crossing across Doyle Carlton and a speed table as part of that project, and that one just wrapped up earlier this year, and it seems to be pretty heavily used when I was out there last couple of times. Starting early next year, we'll be having a landscaping project on I-275, basically from Floro, Nebraska, up to Hillsborough, with an emphasis in the Robles Park area. That is a, going to be a whole lot of plants that are going out there. We have almost nine, over nine hundred trees, thirty-three hundred plants that'll be planted along that corridor. Most of those will be outside of the noise barriers. We do have some at the interchanges for beautification in that area, and that one is, we worked really heavily with the city of Tampa to pick the right Florida-friendly and site-appropriate plants and get them in locations that'll be easy to maintain. Another project we've been working with the city significantly on is the Ashley Drive project. As you guys know, you all have a project on Ashley to reconnect some of that grid network there, and in order to support that, we have to make some modifications to the off-ramps in Ashley and Scott Street. Now, our, our permanent long-term condition, that we are going to rebuild the Scott Street ramp and the ramp that goes on to I-275 above that, that one's not scheduled to much later in our work program, like 2032. So we've been working with the city to identify some interim improvements that we can kind of piece together, a way to, to handle that displaced traffic from the construction. So on Scott Street, we are going to widen the off-ramp so we can put another, a turn, dedicated turn lane onto Tampa to take some of that, and then there'll be some other detour routes that we're going to work with the city to implement there. Howard Franklin Bridge, that is one of our biggest projects, most visible right now. That one's going to wrap up early next year. That does include a bicycle and pedestrian facility on the north side of that bridge that'll tie into, you know, all the trails that are in the Cypress Park area over there, just north of I-4, and eventually into the greater trail network in the city of Tampa and throughout Hillsborough County and Pinellas County as well, because on the other side, we're connecting to Forest Street Trail, as well as Olmerton Trail in Pinellas County. The downtown operational and safety improvement project, it's currently ongoing, that should be complete sometime in the middle of 2027, probably spring to summer in that range. And then Westshore Interchange, which is the next big project that we'll have coming online, that one's going to start construction sometime early next year. We have done a lot of the early works projects to help with the traffic accommodation during that construction project, and that one will be under construction a little while, it'll be like 2031, early 2032 is when it's completed. So those are all the updates I have, but I'm more than happy to answer any questions that you all may have.
Councilwoman Hertek.
I want to say thank you for all those updates, and I, I do want to say that I lead a Sunday bike group that has been looking at some of the, the changes in bike ped accommodations, and we have noticed that there is the light now at Ola and MLK, so very excited about that. Want to say thank you, really looking forward to the finishing of that project, but it's nice to see what's, what's coming, and really excited about all the other improvements, and just want to say thank you so much, and really appreciate that you are bringing these updates.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. There's, those of us that serve on the TPO, which is the majority of the people up here on this panel right now, we're very, we are very aware of how receptive and what a great partner the Florida Department of Transportation is, particularly this district, and what, with the city of Tampa and what you all do for the city of Tampa. We're lucky to have our secretary and all the support staff and what you bring to the city of Tampa. So one, I'm half of council, thank you guys for being such a good partner, because I know there's, there's other areas that maybe not have such great relationships and partnerships, and I think we're very lucky to have that. Just making sure, and probably should have been, it could have been a phone call, but that you guys are retaining the underpass somewhere in that Westshore project for a mixed-modal type of transition from north of I-275 to south of I-275, so we don't end up in another Cypress situation.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
So if you could just take an IOU on making sure that we reserve a way, a path underneath I-275 with the Westshore, like Trask or wherever it's going to be, so that we reserve an access from north to south, so that we have a mixed-modal connection to the, you know, any of our proposed transportation options.
Yeah, so we do have a plan to, at the Dale Mabry, as well as Westshore, to provide that connections, but, and I think there might be one at Rio Street, but I'm not a hundred percent sure on that one.
Yeah, just, I, I just want to keep hitting that, so we don't end up just with Cypress, where we end up with a big support structure in the middle of the street where we wanted to go down.
Yeah, we appreciate those reminders.
Okay, very good.
Keep them coming.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate it. Again, make sure you bring our good wishes from council back to everybody that you're working with. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I've got a personal point of privilege. I'd like to introduce Officer Joseph O'Neill. Come here, you can't get away. We have officers that come and get you. Come on.
Come on, office.
Come to the podium. Don't make me rule you out of order. You have to stand in front of the podium. So this is Officer Joseph O'Neill. He is celebrating twenty-five years of service with the city of Tampa. So he's been protecting the city for, was it the city of Tampa for twenty-five years?
Forty-five, forty-five.
Forty-five? Oh, my gosh, I had twenty-five, forty-five years, wow, of protecting us, but also in addition to that, twenty years is in the reserves of helping protect the United States of America. And I believe today is your last day?
Yes, sir.
Wow, well, thank you, I wanted, one, I wanted to say thank you on behalf of city council for your service to the citizens of Tampa and the, and the United States of America. We appreciate everything you do. I know, I'm sure you are aware that this council is very appreciative of the people that wear badges and protect us every day, and we'll continue, and I know you're going to continue to have a wonderful experience in retirement. I once was there, I enjoyed it, but maybe we'll see you in, running for office one day.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Councilman Carlson. Oh, no, no, you have to stay there, you have to stay there and get, he's got to be on you a little more. Councilman Carlson.
He forgot to mention a, a really important point, that you've been protecting us.
Yeah.
And the people that come to this chamber, so thank you so much for that.
It's interesting, I've never knew so much went on in city council.
Hey, we're the best TV in town.
It is, it is.
It's free, right?
Yeah, actually. Well, so can you do me a favor? Can you state your name, and you want to say just something a little bit to everybody?
Joseph O'Neill. I've been here forty-five years, I've enjoyed it. It's like any, it's a hard job, but it's what you make of it, you put a lot into it, you get a lot out. I made a lot of friends and a lot of good acquaintance, a lot of good, good times and bad times.
Very good.
But the good times outweigh the bad.
Well, thank you for your service, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Oh, Councilman Vera.
Just Officer, thank you for your service, and you're always a pleasure to deal with, and you've always got a nice smile, and, but just forty-five years, that's, as the song goes, that's something to be proud of, so just thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Well, thank you. Okay, okay, walk away.
Thank you.
Very good. Okay, so we are at Board and Administrative Appointments, item number, what's that? Oh, public comment, I'm just giving public comment. Okay. And there we go, there we go. Okay, so public comment. I do not have the sheets, Tim. I don't have, I don't have the sheets. Signing sheets. Michael Randolph, is he on? Michael, I'll start and say, one, it was, I met Michael for the first time this past week, and it was a pleasure, I really enjoyed meeting you.
Good morning. Thank you so much. So yes, my name is Michael Randolph. Today, I want to talk about training that's coming up for Generation Z, building a new school and a pathway to power. Over the last five months, young leaders from Selfie Springs in East Tampa have stepped up for it, and they clarify with conviction that methods is urgent and unified, they're ready to lead, not someday, but now. They're not asking for permission, they're demanding the tools, and that's why training is not a luxury, it's a necessity. Unlike the Neighborhood Leadership Center, top-down model, our approach flipped the script. We don't just teach leadership, we cultivate community-leading power. This is the Ground Up Blueprint. is the ground-up blueprint designed by and for the next generation of change agents. Our first workshop starts on October 30th. Applications are now being opened for our innovative 12-week training. What does it include? Affordable housing development, program design, community organizing and mobilizing from the block to the ballot, economic and community development, our leverage and opportunity zone, community benefit to CRA and other tools, artificial intelligence for local empowerment, tools for equity, negotiation, engaging lenders, investors, developers, politicians, yeah, politicians, and others with confidence, and finally, private, private deal-making, putting the community at the head of the table. Mrs. Moore and Training is a blueprint for generational wealth, civic engagement, and a bottom-up transformation process. To the young people that's taking the leadership, thank you. And thank you, City Council.
Thank you, Mr. Randolph. Our next speaker is, oh, I'm sorry, our next speaker is Marty Shelby. Marty Shelby, would you like to read the rules?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, good morning. Good morning, members of the public, Martin Shelby, City Council Attorney. Very briefly, I'd like to talk with you about the rules governing the decorum of today's meeting. Members of the public are allowed a reasonable opportunity at the beginning of today's meeting to address any item on the agenda before the city council takes official action on the item. A three-minute time limit applies to all speakers providing public comment. Now, if you wish to speak during general public comment, which is coming up next, you should have filled out a speaker card and placed it in the box outside the room. One card per speaker. Each person submitting a card will be recognized by name to approach and speak. Names, please, have to be printed legibly, because names that cannot be read will not be called. Now, if you're here to speak at a public hearing, that is listed as a public hearing on the agenda, use the signing sheet that's outside the chambers instead, and your opportunity to speak to that item will be when that item is called up. If you need assistance, please see city staff. Speakers and members of the public are also reminded to please refrain from disruptive behavior, including making vulgar or threatening remarks or making or causing disruptive noises or sounds or displaying signs or graphics. The chair will rule out of order any person who speaks without being recognized or attempts to address the council from outside the speaker area at the podium. Persons failing to comply with the council's rules may also be ruled out of order by the chair and, at the discretion of the chair, may be removed from the chambers for the remainder of today's meeting. Finally, please be advised that that general public comment is the time for you to speak on items on the consent agenda and on the items that are set for staff reports. If it is a staff report, the time to speak is now. Finally, city council should remain from engaging a speaker under public comment, and the public should be aware that the city council does not take questions or have a dialogue during public comment. This is your opportunity to express your position. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shelby. Question, so Valerie and Charlie, you signed up on the public hearing. I'm assuming that you wanted to speak during public comment, is that correct?
Yes.
And Charlie, public comment, okay, I'll incorporate you into that list, thank you. Tara Bluma, followed by Marty Green. Tara?
I don't want to be first.
Well, you weren't, we've had lots of speakers before you.
Good morning, I'm Tara Bluma. I wanna talk about the CIP vote that you had the other night. I feel strongly that those items should've had separate votes. I know that more than one council member had concerns with various individual items, and lumping them all together is pressuring people to have to obviously approve the entire package instead of being evaluated on their individual merit, especially with so many concerns regarding the $100 million South Howard project. Two people had mentioned sunk costs, and we've already thrown money after that project, but you shouldn't throw more money at a bad project, just because you've already spent some. Let's cut our losses and move on to some smaller projects that can actually help the neighborhood with more focused capital improvements there. And then I wanna talk about the city council charitable giving topic. I believe that you are all good people with the best of intentions, and your hearts are in the right place. There are thousands of nonprofit organizations in the Tampa Bay area, and we can't give to them all, and nor should you want to, because, just because an organization is doing great work does not mean that it necessarily should be funded by the government. I work in this industry, I think that you're doing this backwards. You have all these groups that you all have decided are great and you wanna support, and now you're trying to find departments to stick them to. You need to start with your goal, identify what success looks like, and what programs are going to best accomplish that. That, some portion of that might be city programs, it might be state and federal partnerships, it might be directed personal grants to individuals, and some of that will be and should be working with our great nonprofit partners. But after you identify what your goals are, you need to go out and look for the best nonprofit to help you accomplish that specific goal. Just because they're great does not mean that they are the best thing, the best organization to help for that specific goal in line with that department. Then you should look at their charity navigator ratings, you should look at their financial reports, reviews from other nonprofit peers, and their client population. Who are the people that they're serving, and do those people trust that organization? I haven't heard, oh, sorry, let's then give them specific objectives and then hold them accountable. I haven't heard a single one of you say, hey, what did we get for that $175,000 annually to the Florida Orchestra?
Thank you very much.
Can you defend that? Arts and Culture is slated to receive 12% of nonprofit funding, Tampa History eight, and Veterans three.
Time's up. Please be respectful. Marty Green, followed by Mitesna.
Hello, my name is Marty Green with the Mobility Department. I call it, I call it, I call it sexual assault, but I also call it womanizing. As this states, this is from another employee that was scared to come forth about Michael Brown. It says, more disturbing, I personally witnessed a temporary employee named Erica engaging in sexual activity with Mr. Brown while at work, while at work. This is the problem. Mr. Brown gonna try to blame it on another girl that it was already questioned by Ray Rodriguez. So, it's a lot of cover-up going on, it's like it's going hand-to-hand, 'cause it went from Vic, Michael Brown, it, this is a continual pattern with having sexual advances, sexual problems with employees. So, something need to be dealt with with this situation, and the employee's scared to come forward. The same situation, paying Michael Brown for overtime, I got the whole email, and he wasn't willing to come forward, but my lawyer's dealing with that situation. Now, what I wanna do, bring forward today is, um, let's talk about Stonewater, North Tampa. The City of Tampa paid out $3.2 million, but altogether, it was paid out seven point, I mean, seven, $750 million. No, we had fault, the reason why we didn't, it's called preventative maintenance. We did not maintenance none of those pumps. I was the one that was going to get the diesel trucks and bring them back to the yard so the, so the diesel could be filled up. The reason why those pumps don't turn on is the same reason, is this courthouse go blank today, what would kick on? The second generator, it would kick, it would kick on. Therefore, why that, why didn't that company kick on? The reason it didn't kick on, because it didn't have no diesel in the tanks. That's the real reason why. So, therefore, try to blame it on the hurricanes, say the hurricane did, this the hurricane did. No, we did that, that's on us. We're human, we make mistakes, but at the end of the day, the FTEs is not getting the training that we need to move forward and go past, uh, try to conquer this situation. Like, I say about the hurricanes, we're not ready for it. If one come right now, this, the city is gonna go down. Why, you wanna say, we could talk about South Tampa, but what about North Tampa? All those peoples, they don't have no cars, they have no money, ICE is picking them up because there's a lot of immigrants over there, and you have a lot of poor black people. So, we're gonna talk about, we talking about people that can't afford it. We're not, we're, we're trying to make the blame, the county, no, the city, we're the issue. You're supposed to go to them pumps every, every 30 days, turn them pumps on, make sure you go to the outfall, and see doesn't go to the, see if that go to the outfall, turn on the next one, go to the next outfall. Therefore, that's not what we're doing. We turning them on, see if it's working, and then it's not working. Therefore, under the sunshine law, anybody could request it, but at the end of the day, you could request it, but who is it gonna follow, deaf ears? So, therefore, like I say, the problems that I have, Brian Campbell saying, saying certain things, he's just as well as them, he's a serpent, he's a snake, because he's a spinous little man, he gonna say nothing about what's going on, and I address that with him.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Mitesna, followed by Stephanie Pointer. Good morning.
Uh, huru. Huru means freedom in Swahili. Mitesna, Tampa, Florida. There's a lot of talk going on about Charlie Kirk. I wanna bring some awareness to that. Some people have objection to them saying that Charlie Kirk is equivalent to Martin Luther King or Mother Teresa or whosoever, and it's a great probability that to some people he might be, and they're entitled to that opinion. But to some people, Tyler Robinson is like Nat Turner, or like John Brown, or like Fred Hampton, or like Huey P. Newton. Tyler Robinson is like the resistance. So, what one person is to one person, it might be to somebody else, might not be that to somebody else. And in life, there are consequences. I have consequences for coming here trying to express reparations, trying to express that we're 26% of this population, and we need 26% of this city budget retroactively from 1855. That's trillions of dollars we need in our community. You got MFs coming up here talking about a bitch just came here and talked about 900 trees in Robles Park. They talk about bike paths, they talk about green space, they talk about Riverwalks, but nobody in this city council, in the history of this city council, has ever talked about an average plan, a general plan, a comprehensive plan for the African, for the 26% of the population of this city. Nobody has ever talked about a comprehensive plan for how the African is gonna be here in this city a thousand years from now. We get nothing. People coming down here having to beg, 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 made African people out of a begging class, and y'all laugh at it, and you try to stand up, and they shoot you right down. You try to stand up for what's decent, for what's humane, and they try to treat you like, oh, he's radical, he's this, that person's that, she's this, she's that. No, that's not the case. You come in a place where there's city government, and you don't hear the word colonialism, reparations, gentrification. In a time like today, our sorry city council have never once mentioned the word Palestine. Genocide going on right now, right this second in Palestine. It's going on right here. Seven people, and you've never heard the word Palestine come out their mouth. Something's wrong with that.
Thank you, Mitesna. Stephanie Pointer, followed by Connie Burton.
Good morning, Stephanie Pointer. I, first of all, wanna thank the staff that reaches out to me. I have quite a few that, that actually do reach out to me when I do my agenda review, and, and they do answer some of my questions, that's why I don't further pursue them. But I think it's really nice that they take the time to answer the questions, 'cause I think my questions are pretty relevant, but, you know, not always. I'd like to first point out that Ashley Drive, I hope every penny of it comes out of the downtown CRA, if you can ever get any money out of the downtown CRA, 'cause Franklin Street can't. West River Project, same thing, although I still think it violates the comp plan. Number 26, that Clover with credit card fees, I hope that that's working forward on getting us not supplementing people using their credit cards instead of paying cash or using their debit card like normal businesses do. Forty and 41, the economic development funds that are going to USF, I am, my mouth hangs open that they would still be considered middle and low-income businesses in the six to 99 employees. I'm thinking one to five is middle and small, low-income businesses. It blows my mind. I mean, my dad owned business for years, he was in the last business, and he, he was making good money, and if you're not making good money by the time you've got six solid employees, then, then you're doing something really, really wrong. But I would think that they would lower it down to one to five employees and start there. Forty-two through 44, 140% of AMI currently, according to the city's website. If you are one person, you can make $102,000 a year and qualify to buy those homes. Well, I've never made that much money in my entire freaking life in one year. That's a lot of money. I'm just kinda flabbergasted that we're gonna give up these decent-sized lots and just build one single-family home on it. When we talk about missing middle, we talk about trying to generational wealth, but it, these should be going to folks who are in the 80th percentile at least, people who are making $59,000 a year as one person, or $83,000 a year for a family of four. We've really gotta look at this. I'm wondering why we're giving away the money if we can't figure out how to do better with what we are gonna result in for the people who need it the most in our community, because 140% AMI is market rate. Stop it. Number 45, we're giving a 7.7% raise to our staffing for mobility services. I hope that there's somewhere in there, the contracts as long as my arm, that we ensure that at least 3% of that is going to their employees, and they're not all put in their pocket, because everybody else is getting about a 3% price index increase. Number 72, let's look at what we can do to help the people who own their houses as of September of last year, when, when the hurricanes hit, what we can do to help offset the fees that they have for something else with our INLUAP fees.
Thank you, Ms. Pointer. Connie Burton, followed by Carol Anne Bennett.
Good morning, Connie Burton. Stephanie really took up most of what I wanted to say, but focusing on item number three and four, which is the mayor's prerogative to do what she do. But, you know, I was just downtown the other day and looking at Crest Building, and it's been abandoned for years, probably won't ever be touched. But people can cheer and holler about all the great things that's going on in public housing and destruction of Robles Park, and the fallacy is that many of those residents won't return. You go right now to the Encore, where they done took public housing property and building a hotel, I don't know, probably the workers would be some of the former residents, but I can't see people being able to live up there, to rent up there, to enjoy that. You go right there on Ray Charles Boulevard, where they give these great speeches of how all this redevelopment is happening, poor people, they got a Encore Daycare Center, it's advertised as that, but it's dead empty. Not a child in sight. Not a child in sight. Go over there and look at it. 1107 Ray Charles Boulevard. So, all of this stuff, all this appointment of these people to the board, when you can't even get them to come to this podium to tell you, what are they doing, realistic, and toward homeownership for poor people? What have they done to make sure that people, even though they have been busted out and pushed out into the suburbs, into the county, how have their lives improved? The only thing that has happened is out of sight, out of mind. Item number 41, 42, you know what you can't say no more? That Singapore, uh, single-family homes is where these LLCs is getting the properties for free, you elevate them, but then they come back and sell it as if like they're some real brokers. Now, what you got in this agreement, that they can sell it or rent, because most poor people in our community won't be able to buy it at this price. Y'all know it. You all know it, but if it make you feel good saying that you're giving money back in some of these communities, you're reaching out to some of these mostly African nonprofits that's supposed to be taking care of poor people, it is all BS. It has not helped the masses of the people, it has not changed the economic conditions of our people, and you could put all this stuff on your brochures as you move up politically? The people are here to remind you, it is not working.
Thank you, Ms. Burton. Carol Anne Bennett, followed by Valerie Bullock. Carol Ann Bennett, followed by Valerie Bullock.
Hi, my name is Carol Ann Bennett. Item seventy-two is to allow hurricane victims to pay the old sidewalk and new fee. Anyone who applied before the fee was raised on April seventeenth is already exempt from the higher fee, and that is six months after Hurricane Milton, so it probably applies to most people who still own their hurricane-damaged home. Maybe some people don't know that. After the hurricanes, the city waived permit fees for months to help out hurricane-impacted residents, but they did not waive the permit fees forever. There was an end date. But even so, this proposal is okay with me under two conditions. One, it must be for the person who lived in the house during the hurricane, not people who have bought out the old homeowners. And two, it must be because there's a legitimate obstacle like a tree or ditch, not just because they don't want a sidewalk or there's no connecting sidewalk. Remember, no one has to pay this fee, they can just build the sidewalk. When we amended the code in 2021, the no sidewalk excuse was supposed to be eliminated. Those are the places that need them the most. But we were told it needed to stay for special circumstances and would be rarely used. Instead, the exact opposite has happened. Reason number one, there are four reasons, reason number one has been used more than all the other three reasons combined. You can see the percentages per year of reason number one being used. Builders are exploiting this exemption to increase their problem, their profits. The builder of this house is allowed to pay the old fee instead of building sidewalks because there was no sidewalk. This is a over three million dollar house. They, they could afford to put in sidewalks, they just did it to put a little more money in their pocket. Same for the, same for, for this house, they say they should pay the fee instead of putting in a sidewalk, 'cause quote-unquote, "It's unlikely there will be additional development nearby." This is my neighborhood. The house next door is old, it's lived in by an elderly person, it's covered in vines, it's gonna be sold soon and redeveloped. This is a map of the Virginia Park Pipes Project. The green is all the infill sidewalk that was supposed to be built to close the gaps, and a lot of the blue, actually, there's green next to it or behind it, but you can't really see it. They shouldn't have this many gaps. If the builders had built sidewalks instead of abusing the loopholes, we could do more with our money and spread it farther. Those gaps were going to be filled with the all for transportation money, we didn't get it, so it didn't happen. But we still have that goal, and think of how much farther our money can go if, if there's less gaps, so, so that when we finally get to do it, it can go all around schools and places that really need it. I'm fine with approving this allowance if you meet the two conditions I outlined. Remember, no one has to pay the fee, they can just build a sidewalk, and the "I don't want a sidewalk" is really not in the best interest of our community.
Thank you, Ms. Bennett. Valerie Bullock, followed by Charlie Adams.
Good morning, Valerie Bullock.
Good morning.
I'm gonna read something that one of y'all had appointed Diane Ziegler to the CRA Board, and I'm gonna read something that she told me on Facebook. I told her that she was a problem and the birds that she say she hurt East, East Tampa people with, and then she didn't like us, she shouldn't have moved over there. And when I said "us," I meant black, poor people. This is what she said, "No, Valerie, you are the one who has hurt East Tampa. It wasn't on my watch that all those hundreds of neglected homes in the hands of so-called homeowners ended in such deplorable conditions and need to be on life support, surviving only with tax funding. Not my watch that your East Tampa ponds ended looking like dumps, and not my deal that people dump their free lunches right in the intersection, 'cause you know. But we clean up the hood every day and haul in ten gallons of trash. That's seventy gallons a week. I never see your face out there cleaning up the neighborhood, so you must be part of the problem. The best thing happening is that people with more skills and talent are moving in, restoring sanity, and that's what you resent." Now, somebody put on the East Tampa CRA Board, and she have views like that, and I'm asking you, are those your views also? Because what she said was very derogatory, and this isn't the first time she's said something like that. When I post on Facebook, we go back and forth, her Facebook name is Comfort Woods. One time, she told me, "I'll just want to live in poverty, turpication," whatever that mean, 'cause I never heard of that word before. I can tell you this, my house look just like the people houses on Harbor Island. And I have a problem with three and four, the people who is being appointed to Tampa Housing Authority, have they been vetted? Have it been any other people who could fit that slot more better? 'Cause what I see, when the mayor appoints something, somebody to Tampa Housing Authority, we don't look at them. She says she want them in this rubber stamp, and they stay there and retire the rest of their life. They are so detached from poor working people and what's going on in Tampa Housing Authority property, so it's just ridiculous. If the person gonna go up there and they don't, just because she appoint them and they want the money, if they can't do their job, they shouldn't be there. And I'm against the infill lots, they get money from CRA to build the houses, they wanna build them for a hundred and forty percent AMI, now they gonna get generational wealth. If the city give them the lot and the CRA give them the money to buy it, we need to put some, some limitations and make them sign contracts. Hundred and forty percent AMI, that is too much. They can build two houses, they're townhouses. We need density there. They wanna put it everywhere else, let's put it there, and then you serve two people instead of one.
Thank you, Ms. Bullock. Okay, we have Charlie Adams, and that is the last speaker I have on my list.
Good morning, City Council.
Did you sign, did you sign a card? Okay, well, I will seek that out, thank you.
Good morning, City Council. Thank you for the opportunity for, to speak. This morning, I wasn't available. My, my name is Charlie Adams, representative of Salford Springs. I wasn't here to speak just last Tuesday in regards to a few of the items that you spoke on, regards, and for the budget for the Salford Springs area. I would thank you all for, for your efforts in paying attention to the Salford Springs community and, and making sure that we're not forgotten moving forward in the future. And Councilwoman Lynn Hurtak, I really appreciate you taking action in regards to River Charles Park, Meniscopo, Guido, Guido Meniscopo, Councilman Bill Carlson, I really appreciate it. Charlie Maureen, your comments as well. Nineteen thirty, nineteen twenty-five, September nineteen twenty-five, Josiah Richardson, which was a visionary that came to the Salford Springs community and envisioned a, a tourist attraction that, that brought people from all over the world, and, and he seen something unique, and he added value to this community. He added value to Tampa, and it's nearly a hundred years later, and now we're taking action to, hopefully, we may not see what it once was, but hopefully, it's something even more beautiful than, than the past. My family is from Spring Hill, the original Spring Hill, it was an African-American community in Salford Springs, between Waters Avenue and Bush Boulevard. My grandfather would tell me stories about how his mother would have to have passes in order to cross the waters, in order, to get the Salford Springs to work. He also told me stories about how he would have to either go to the, in order to swim in a natural spring, he would have to either go before the, the spring opened or after, because it was whites only, and they would, they would call it bloody Sundays, right? And whoever won the fight that day, that's who would swim, and it would go back and forth. And so at that time, it was a thriving community, you know, economic, it was economic boom that was happening during, during the twenties, headed to nineteen thirties, until the treacherous hurricane came and flooded the Salford Springs community. My family at the time, and many other thousands of blacks that's from the area, particularly during the nineteen thirties or twenties, we didn't have access to that capital. And I ask that, as redevelopment come, change come, that we prioritize the minority communities in regards to job creation and entrepreneurship, access to capital, so that we can take part of changing our community, that we take part of being part of redeveloping and growing our community. So as contractors, developers are awarded these contracts that make sure that they prioritize higher within the Salford Springs community. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Charlie. Okay, next speaker, and if you'd start with your name, go ahead. I don't have your card, but we'll find it.
Hello, my name is Ashley Morrow, and I will be sharing Tampa's black history. So I'm gonna start with Adam. He was lynched December sixteenth, eighteen fifty-nine, and to my record, to my recollection, that's the only one I, the earliest one I could find. His case was appealed, he was defended by, with, Obi Hart, sorry, Obi Hart defended his case. And when Obi Hart defended his case, he went to go get an appeal. While he was out getting the appeal, the, a mob came and stormed the jail, removed Adam, as well as a white man who was scheduled to be lynched, and they both were lynched on the edge of the scrub. Here is the article describing it. A man by the name of Luke Moore was killed, was allegedly murdered by Adam. And at the time, a man, John Brown, up in Harper's Ferry, was leading, was trying to start a raid with enslaved people, and they lynched him as well, and the people in Tampa were kind of in a bit of a uproar, and they did not want anything like that happening down here. So he was lynched December second, and Adam was lynched December sixteenth. And here's just an article talking about him being lynched the day before, along with the white man, George Buckley. And then the final article is about a man, a man coming back to Tampa, just giving a recollection account about the, the man being lynched near the scrub. Right? Here's just a slide about the town of Tampa, how it was first created. Tampa at the time of Adam's lynching was only ten years old. The village, Village of Tampa was started in eighteen forty-nine, after a great gale came to Tampa, which was a hurricane. And they decided to turn into a village because the, they were, all the laws were created based off the county, 'cause all of the cattle, it was a cattle industry, so they were like, we need to create our own little thing. So they started the Tampa, Village of Tampa, eighteen forty-nine. It was reincorporated in eighteen fifty-five. Same year, eighteen fifty-five, a courthouse was created. This was the courthouse that was actually across the street from us, across Kennedy. Lafayette was formerly named Kennedy, and right now, it's the location of the police station, the big blue building. What also happened at the courthouse were slave auctions. These are just some slave auctions that, slave, sorry, some, some articles about slave auctions that took place here in Tampa, and I just highlighted it. At Public Outcry in the front of, of the courthouse in Tampa, it's just highlighted in all of those articles. And then we get to the people that were here during that time in the slave census. Some of their names are still on things here today. We have Hooker's Lake, also Hooker's Point, or Lake Hooker. You have Robert Gamble, who has a plantation over in, near Allerton Mall. Liam, Simeon L. Sparkman, the uncle of Stefan Sparkman, who Stark Sparkman Works is named after, as well as James McKay, McKay Bay, and William Ashley, which he has a love story over, and I, I say that with rabbit ears, love story of Tombstone in Oklawn Cemetery.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a beautiful day.
See you next week.
Thank you. That concludes public comment. Our next item on the agenda is our Board and Administrative Appointments. Is Saul Hamani in the House? How about Thomas Murphy? Okay. Okay, I have him. Councilwoman Hurtak?
I looked for anything about Saul Hamani, and there, all it was, was a reconsideration. The original application wasn't there, and so all I could find from the person is that they don't live in the city of Tampa, therefore, I can't support them.
Okay, well, should, should we continue it? Yeah, should we, should we continue it to, to give a chance for the administration to provide whatever background and maybe?
Let's continue.
But my issue, though, still, is that it's Tampa Housing Authority, and we need people in the city of Tampa, and this person, according to their address, lives in like town and country. And that's just, again, we have a lot of capable people in the city of Tampa. I know some of you disagree with me on boards and commissions, but I do believe that people who, and I, I just simply will never be able to support someone who does not live in the city of Tampa, just by virtue that they don't live in the city of Tampa.
I agree.
Housing is a critical, critical part of our city, and it is what people are asking of the top three things, two of them involve housing. They should be someone who lives in the city of Tampa.
Councilman Vera.
Thank you very much. What I would suggest is, is that we continue this another time. My position on that is, and it's kind of in the middle where Councilwoman, Councilwoman Hurtak is, is that if somebody doesn't live in the city, there, there is a higher level of scrutiny that should be applied for that. I call that the Joe Greco Rule, and I'm joking, but there is a higher level of scrutiny that should be applied, and I'm fine with that. So if we wanna continue that to another time, to inquire further, I think that's reasonable. I'm good with that.
So Councilwoman Hurtak?
I mean, I, I just don't, I'm just gonna vote, I'm gonna vote, it doesn't matter for me, I'm gonna vote no. So if somebody else wants to continue it, that's fine, my vote will still be no.
Well, just to verify, what, that, Councilwoman Miranda?
In order for me to be a hundred percent sure of what's going on and correct everything, I'm not saying something's wrong or right. These two individuals are not here to answer their charges against them, or whatever it was talking about. But at least I wanna give these two individual a chance to come here and tell us where they live. I'm not questioning Ms. Hurtak at all, Councilmember Hurtak at all, if you might be a hundred percent correct. But I wanna make sure that these individuals are given any chance, and I don't know these two individuals at all. But I just wanna make sure as to why and so forth and so on. I'm not questioning Ms. Councilmember Hurtak, I just wanna hear from them.
Councilwoman Hurtak, followed by Councilman.
I just wanna reply to that. I'm not talking about the second one. Item number four, he had a full application where he talked about his, his, I mean, that was a full application. The first one wasn't and doesn't live in the city, the second person does live in the city and had a full application.
I thought you weren't living.
Yeah, no, no, no. Number four, Thomas Murphy lives in the city, is very active in the CAC of Central Park, so I, I.
I have no problem.
Yeah, I, I, I think Thomas Murphy is a great addition. I just, again, don't have the background, and we've asked for this before, that if, if we have somebody who is trying to be reappointed, that their original application come on, and it wasn't there, and again, but for me, it's just the person not living in the city.
Councilman Carlson.
Yeah, first, I just wanna say, I agree with you on living in the city, especially for something like this. On the, on the off chance that the person used their work address instead of their home address or something like that, I, I would rather just continue it and then, then look at it in a couple weeks. So I, I, did somebody make a motion?
Nobody's made a motion.
I'll make a motion and continue.
Would you, so would, would we like to entertain a motion to continue item twenty-three to October twenty-third?
So move.
We have a motion from Councilman Carlson, a second from Councilman Vera to continue item three to October twenty-third. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, ayes have it. Okay, item number?
They don't live in the city.
No, no.
This is for a continue.
Yeah, just to continue.
That's what it says, and I agree with her.
Number three, to continue number three.
But if he doesn't live in the city.
But, but that's.
We'll get the information.
We'll do a continue.
All I wanna do process, so they can't say we did something.
Yes.
Okay, so the ayes have it, it's passed unanimously. Item number four.
I'll, I'll move this resolution, because like I said, I, I read his application. Thomas Murphy has come in front of us as a CAC member. That is an area that does a lot with Tampa Housing Authority already, because Don Court and, and Central Park is mostly Tampa Housing Authority land, so I do support his nomination.
So we have a motion, Councilwoman, we have a motion from Councilwoman Hurtak, a second from Councilman Maniscalco. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, the ayes have it unanimously, thank you. Councilman Vera, you?
No, I was gonna move consent, I'm sorry.
Okay. I thought you were jumping ahead of us.
No, sir.
Okay, we do not have any requests for reconsideration of legislative matters.
That's true. Are we supposed to do public comment for boards and administrative appointments?
We did, that's what we did.
Oh, general public comment? Okay, I thought it was.
Yeah, that's, that's why we did that order. Okay, so we're gonna move to the consent items, items five through ten, Councilman Vera.
Yes, sir, hereby move five through ten.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilman Vera, a second from Councilman Maniscalco. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, ayes have it unanimously. Neighborhood Community Affairs Committee, Councilwoman Hurtak, I love the great team.
Yes, I move items eleven through eighteen.
We have a motion from Councilwoman Hurtak, a second from Councilman Miranda. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, ayes have it unanimously. Infrastructure Committee, Councilman Maniscalco, nineteen through twenty-five.
I move items nineteen through twenty-five.
We have a motion from Councilman Maniscalco, a second from Councilman Vera. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, ayes have it unanimously, thank you. Finance Committee, twenty-six through twenty-nine.
Move twenty-six through twenty-nine.
We have a motion from Councilman Miranda, a second from Councilman Maniscalco. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, ayes have it unanimously. Development Economic Opportunity Committee, thirty through forty-four, Councilman Carlson.
I move thirty through forty-four.
Councilwoman Hurtak?
I just wanted to say that I do not disagree with the members of the public who have talked about the fact of the infill lots. Not all of these infill lots are single-family. We are working, quite a few of these are multifamily. I'm not sure about these individuals, but we were.
Um, I'm not sure about these individuals, but, uh, we worked hard to ma- to see that the infill lots for, um, the infill phase three do have multifamily on them.
Thank you. We had a motion from Councilman, was it Carlson? Second from Councilman Miranda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it. And we are at forty-five through forty-seven. Councilwoman Hertak?
Yes, I move items forty-five through forty-seven.
We have a motion from Councilwoman Hertak, a second from Councilman Miranda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have-
And I-
Councilwoman Hertak?
Yeah, and I do have something to say about, I did ask about temporary tra- um, labor for special events, and I did ask about if we are gonna be taking our stormwater people off of setting up, and I'm told that they're still discussing that.
Okay, very good.
So, we need to keep an eye on that.
Okay, uh, did we vote on that? We have not. All those in favor say, did we vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it unanimously. Okay, now we're time for our walk-on item.
Can I say one thing?
Councilman Carlson?
I, I think you ought, to, Councilmember Hertak, I think you ought to make a motion in new business that we should, that would ask the administration to remove that. If, if the administration is still considering whether they should use stormwater money for, for parades, we need to make a motion. It, it might not be binding, but we should at least make a motion of our intention that they should not do that.
I, I, that would, that would be outside of our purview, though. I mean, you can make a, you can make a-
We can make a request.
You can make a suggestion, yeah.
We, yeah, we can't, we can't force, as I said, we can't force it, but we can make a request.
Okay, walk on. Walk on by.
Rebecca Jones, Legal Department. Um, this is just a request to walk on a resolution to set two public hearings for October ninth and October twenty-third regarding a development agreement between the city and Tampa Bay Wheel. Um, because of some contractual obligations Tampa Bay Wheel had, we need to speed up the deadline, so this would give us time for the public notice and require two public hearings.
Okay.
So, move to set those public hearings?
We have a motion from Councilman Maniscalco to set the public hearings. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Councilman Maniscalco. All those in favor say aye.
Can I make a quick-
Councilman Carlson?
Yeah, I think that for transparency, I understand why they're moving quickly, but I think for transparency, this should have been noticed. It shouldn't be a walk-on, and we've said in the past that we don't like walk-ons, but um, it, we do have two public hearings that people, the, the purpose is to schedule two public hearings so people will be able to give input, but it shouldn't have been a walk-on thing.
Okay, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, ayes have it unanimously. Thank you. Councilman Maniscalco?
I have scheduled from also, up until twenty.
Okay, we will miss you. Very good. We won't miss you. What time is it?
Yeah, that's what I, yeah, um-
Councilwoman Hertak?
Uh, we have sixty-six, sixty-seven, and sixty-eight, and I, um, I will just say that I will not be voting for sixty-six and sixty-seven, because it's, um, moving money from the CRA to the West River Rock, and I, I, I just don't think we should be doing this at all. So, I'm just not gonna vote for them.
Okay, so I agree. Okay, so, should we, do you want to have this discussion now, or do you just want to wait?
No, I just want to have a different vote. I have no discuss-
Okay, okay.
I have nothing to discuss.
Mr. Shelby?
Do you want to hold those items till-
Yeah, we'll hold it, we'll hold it. Yeah, we'll hold it. Okay, um-
But I'll move item number sixty-eight, because we already approved that as the CRA board.
And that's the only one we have, right? Yeah. Move item sixty-eight. We have a motion from Councilwoman Hertak, a second from Councilman Vera. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, ayes have it. Okay. Okay, can I have a motion to open the ten o'clock hearings?
And ten thirty.
Oh, no, a clock, wow.
Yes, exactly, exactly. Okay, we have a motion to open the ten o'clock hearings from Councilman Miranda, a second from Councilman Vera. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it. Item forty-eight. Your staff?
Mister Chairman, this is, um, uh, the resolution that I brought forth establishing, uh, the, um, charter review process, uh, commencing with the establishment of the charter review board, um, and it's here for your adoption.
Okay, is there any questions on item forty-eight? Councilwoman Hertak?
Uh, I believe we were supposed to have a conversation about this as well. Is that going to happen during new business?
That should happen during new business. It would be appropriate.
Okay, great. Wonderful.
I thought we, I thought we scheduled that for another time, no? Didn't we, didn't we schedule it for a workshop or something?
Not yet.
No.
We didn't.
No, so we should all talk, think about it, um, between now and new business, and figure out if we want to talk about it in new business. I, I think we, uh, we can throw out some ideas during new business and set it, uh, maybe for next, next, uh, next agenda for old business, just to get it done.
It'll ultimately have to result in a resolution, because you made as a policy decision when you chose this ordinance to put the process in place by resolution.
So-
So, so then it would include, um, the, uh, hiring of a facilitator, the hiring of legal and support staff, and then the process to appoint-
Mr. Shelby, can we defer this conversation to new business, and may I suggest that-
Yes.
Chair Pro Tem, uh, consult with Mr. Shelby prior to new business and bring forward something?
Yeah, absolutely. And then, like-
What, you want to add something as well?
You do have, um, two items set for October ninth, and that's where we put apartments to the rear for, there are two rear-
Oh, okay.
That's what was gonna happen, and once you get that-
That's when we were gonna talk.
Then you don't talk about it afterwards.
Okay, thank you for remind, yeah, so we did, we did, we did set something. Okay, well, then, then, yeah, thank you, appreciate it.
Is there anybody in the public that wishes to speak to item forty-eight? You have a motion to close?
Move.
We have a motion to close from Councilman Miranda, a second from Councilwoman Hertak. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it. Please record your vote.
Motion carried unanimously with Maniscalco being absent at vote.
Thank you very much. Item number forty-nine.
Ross Sammons Development Coordination, presenting file number-
No, David, yeah.
Oh.
And, and ask if anybody in the public wishes to speak to it?
No, we already did that.
But you didn't, but you didn't read it by Ty Lo.
Okay, sorry. File number E twenty-twenty-five dash eight, chapter one, ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption, an ordinance of the city of Tampa, Florida, establishing the twenty-twenty-five City of Tampa Charter Review Advisory Commission in accordance with the City of Tampa Home Rule Charter of nineteen seventy-five as amended, section ten point ten, providing for severability, providing for an effective date.
Okay, we, we have the motion from Councilwoman Hertak, a second from Councilman Miranda. Please record your vote. Looks like everybody's recorded, so we're good. Anybody like to announce the vote?
Motion carried unanimously with Maniscalco being absent at vote.
Thank you. Okay, item forty-nine. Now we're ready for you, and we'll get this one better.
Ross Sammons Development Coordination, presenting file number VAC twenty-four dash thirteen for second reading and adoption. I'm available if you have any questions.
Thank you. Does staff, council have any questions, staff? Is there anybody in the public that wishes to speak to item forty-nine?
Motion closed.
We have a motion to close from Councilwoman Hertak, a second from Councilman Miranda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it. Uh, Councilman Miranda?
Chairman, item forty-nine, document, document, eight twenty-four dash thirteen, ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption, ordinance in the city of Tampa, Florida, amending ordinance number twenty twenty-four slash nine-five passed and ordained September nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, which vacated, closed, discontinued, and abandoned that portion of Fourth Avenue right away as more fully described below, to extend one-year requirement to satisfy the water service's special conditions by eighteen months, repealing conflict, providing for severability, providing an effective date.
We have a motion from Councilman Miranda, a second from-
Vera.
Councilman Vera, all those in favor, please record your vote.
Motion carried unanimously with Maniscalco being absent at vote.
Thank you very much. Okay, we are at fifty.
Ross Sammons Development Coordination, presenting file number VAC twenty-five dash sixteen for second reading and adoption, and I'm available if you have any questions.
Thank you. Council have questions? Hearing none, is there anybody in the public who wishes to speak to item number fifty? Hearing none, motion to close from Councilman Miranda, a second from-
Vera.
Councilman Vera, all, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, ayes have it unanimously. Councilwoman Carlson?
Yeah, fifty. My mic's not working, okay. Um, move number fifty, file number VAC twenty-five dash sixteen, ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption, an ordinance of the city of Tampa, Florida, vacating, closing, discontinuing, and abandoning a portion of Alcolu Avenue that is located north of the White, White Way, drive south of Liberty Street, east of Forty-Eighth Street, and west of Fiftieth Street within the revised plat of Terrace Park, Unit Five subdivision in the city of Tampa, Hillsborough County, Florida, as more particularly described in section two hereof, subject to certain covenants, conditions, and restrictions as more particularly set forth herein, providing for enforcement and penalties for violation, providing for definitions, interpretations, and repealing conflicts, providing for severability, providing effective date.
Thank you. We have a motion from Councilman Carlson, a second from Councilman Miranda. Please record your vote.
Motion carried unanimously with Maniscalco being absent at vote.
Thank you. We're moving to the ten o'clock public hearings for, uh, second reading on proposed ordinances, item fifty-one through sixty-one. They're quasi-judicial. If you are here to speak on these items, please stand, raise your right hand, and be sworn in by our clerk.
If you raise your right hand, you swear or firm the testimony that you are about to provide, is it truth and other, but the truth, I certainly do make you.
Okay, item number fifty-one.
Good morning. Stephanie Pope Development Coordination, item number fifty-one is REZ twenty-five forty. This item is a rezoning request for the property located at twenty-nine oh seven West Bay to Bay Boulevard, twenty-nine ten West Barcelona Street, units four oh one through twenty-three oh three, and folio number one-two-seven-two-six-four dash eight-three-three-eight. The request is to rezon from PD Plan Development to PD Plan Development for office, business, and professional retail, restaurant, bar, residential, multifamily, high-rise, and school uses. Revisions have been completed, and certified plans have been submitted to the clerk's office. I'm available if you have any questions.
Council have any questions?
Alex Shaler, four hundred North Ashley Drive. I don't have anything further to add, but happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Any questions? Councilman Vera?
Oh, no, I was just gonna-
Is there anybody in the public that wishes to speak to item fifty-one?
Motion closed.
We have a motion to close from Councilman Miranda, a second from-
Vera.
Councilman Vera, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, ayes have it unanimously. Councilman Vera?
Thank you. I've been ready for a while. I'm joking. You're ready for this one. This is what this is.
I know.
The only reason you came in today was because item fifty-one, right? This is why I ran for office, no. So, I move an ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption, an ordinance rezoning property in general vicinity of twenty-nine oh seven West Bay to Bay Boulevard, night twenty-nine ten West Barcelona Street, units four oh one through two-three oh three, and folio number one-two-seven-two-four dash eight-
No, no.
I'm so sorry. One-two-seven-two-six-four dash eight-three-three-eight. Thank you for that. Uh, in the city of Tampa, more particularly described in section one from zoning district classification, PD Plan Development to PD Plan Development, office, business, and professional retail, restaurant, bar, residential, multifamily, high-rise, and school, providing an effective date.
We have a motion from Councilman Vera, a second from? Second from Councilwoman Hertak. Please record your vote.
Motion carried unanimously with Maniscalco being absent at vote.
Thank you. Item number fifty-two.
Stephanie Pope Development Coordination, item number fifty-two is REZ twenty-five forty-two. This item is a rezoning request for the property located at twenty-four twenty and twenty-four twenty-two West Stroud Avenue and fourteen oh one South Lorenzo Avenue. The request is to rezon from RM twenty-four residential multifamily to PD Plan Development, residential, single-family attached. Revisions have been completed, and certified plans have been submitted to the clerk's office. I am available for any questions.
Council have any questions? Applicant?
Steve Michelini representing the petitioner, respectfully request your approval and be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Is there anybody in the public that wishes to speak to item fifty-two? We have a motion to close from Councilwoman Hertak, a second from Councilman Vera. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, ayes have it unanimously. Please record your vote.
No.
Oh, sorry. Councilwoman Hertak?
File number REZ twenty-five dash forty-two. You really want to move it today.
I do, I do.
I, I think we're all a little out of sync, because we were here Tuesday night.
Yes, sir.
Um, ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption, an ordinance rezoning property in the general vicinity of twenty-four twenty and twenty-four twenty-two West Stroud Avenue and fourteen oh one South Lorenzo Avenue in the city of Tampa, Florida, and more particularly described in section one from zoning district classification, RM twenty-four residential multifamily to PD Plan Development, residential, single-family attached, providing an effective date.
We have a motion from Councilwoman Hertak, a second from Councilman Miranda. Please record your vote.
Motion carry unanimously with Manas Gaco being absent at vote.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms.
Item fifty-three.
Sam Thomas Development Coordination. Item number fifty-three is R E Z twenty-five forty-nine. This item is a rezoning request for the property located at twenty-four twenty-five, twenty-five twenty-five, and twenty-six oh one North Rocky Point Drive. The request is to rezon from residential multifamily twenty-four and Plan Development to Plan Development for storefront residential, commercial office, and all commercial general uses and restaurant. Revisions have been completed and certified plans have been submitted to the clerk's office. Kate Wells with Legal is available if there are any questions regarding the bonus agreement, and I'm also available if there are any general questions.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Okay, does staff, counsel have any questions, staff? Applicant?
Yes, sure, Gardner, four hundred North Ashley Drive. On behalf of the developer and applicant, here to answer any questions. On the bonus agreement, I know there was a directive there. We worked with Legal, we think that they are in agreement, that the way the bonus agreement is written, it's broad enough to be able to potentially include that sidewalk improvement. We've also reached out to Brandon Campbell and are lining up a time to meet with him. So that is the direction that we'd like to go and appreciate your thoughts on that.
Counselwoman Hurtak.
Thank you so much for that. I know it's what the community has asked for and really appreciate that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to speak to item fifty-three? We have a motion from counselman Miranda, a second from counselwoman Hurtak. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, the eyes have it. Counselwoman Hurtak.
I just spoke the last.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, counselman Miranda.
I mean, I'll read again.
That's fine. You're watching the show. Counselman Miranda.
General vicinity of twenty-four twenty-five, twenty-five twenty-five, twenty-six oh one, North Rocky Point Drive in the city of Tampa, Florida, and more particularly described in section one from zoning district classification, R M twenty-four residential multifamily, and P D Plan Development, P D Plan Development, storefront residential, commercial office, all C G uses and restaurant, providing an effective date.
We have a motion from counsel Miranda, a second from counselwoman Hurtak. Please record your vote.
Motion carry unanimously with Manas Gaco being absent at vote.
Thank you. A motion, okay, we have a motion from counselman Miranda, a second from counselwoman Hurtak to move the resolution. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, the eyes have it, thank you. Item number fifty-four.
Good morning, Stephanie Pope Development Coordination. Item number fifty-four is R E Z twenty-five fifty-three. This item is a rezoning request for the property located at forty-three oh seven West Fig Street. The request is to rezon from R M eighteen residential multifamily to P D Plan Development for residential, single-family attached uses. Revisions have been completed and certified plans have been submitted to the clerk's office. I'm available for any questions.
Does counsel have any questions? Applicant?
Steve Michelini representing the petitioner. I respectfully request your approval, and if you have any questions, I'm available.
Any questions? Hearing none, is there anybody in the audience wishes to speak to item fifty-four? We have a motion closed from counselwoman Hurtak, a second from counsel Miranda. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, the eyes have it.
I move fifty-four, file number R E Z twenty-five dash fifty-three. Ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption. Ordinance rezoning property in the general vicinity of four-three zero seven West Fig Street in the city of Tampa, Florida, more particularly described in section one from zoning district classification, R M eighteen residential multifamily to P D Plan Development, residential, single-family attached, providing effective date.
Thank you, we have a motion from counsel McCarrollson, a second from? Counselman Vera, all those, I'm sorry, please record your vote.
Motion carry unanimously with Manas Gaco being absent at vote.
Thank you. Item fifty-five, staff.
Thank you.
Stephanie Pope Development Coordination. Item number fifty-five is R E Z twenty-five sixty-three. This item is a rezoning request for the property located at thirty-eight oh four West San Pedro Street. The request is to rezon from R O one residential office to P D Plan Development, office, business, and professional. Revisions have been completed and certified plans have been submitted to the clerk's office. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, does counsel have any questions? Applicant? Is there an applicant for item fifty-five? Okay. Is there anybody in the public that wishes to speak to item fifty-five?
Counsel, I have that on my list, but it's, I respectfully request your approval.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody in the public that wishes to speak to this item? Hearing none, we have a motion closed. A motion closed from counsel Miranda, a second from?
Second.
Counselwoman Hurtak, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the eyes have it, counselman Vera.
Moving ordinance presented for second reading, adoption, and ordinance rezoning property in general vicinity of three-eight zero four West San Pedro Street in the city of Tampa, Florida, more particularly described in section one from zoning district classification, R zero one residential office to P D Plan Development, office, business, and professional, providing an effective date.
We have a motion from counselman Vera, a second from counselman Miranda. I know, we need to talk about that. Please record your vote.
Were you like trying to emulate a certain like actor? Like that was just a very deep, dark.
Very sultry.
Yeah.
I thought... Please record your vote.
Motion carry unanimously with Manas Gaco being absent at vote.
Thank you, counsel.
To be judged.
Yeah, really? Oh, that's true. That's true. Okay, and we are on item fifty-six.
Stephanie Pope Development Coordination. Item number fifty-six is R E Z twenty-five sixty-six. This item is a rezoning request for the property located at one-oh-one, one-oh-five, one-oh-nine, and one-eleven North Meridian Avenue, eleven-oh-five East Washington Street, and one-oh-two, and one-oh-six North Twelfth Street. This request is to rezon from C D two channel district to C D two channel district for retail sales, shoppers' goods, residential multifamily, and hotel. Revisions have been completed and certified plans have been submitted to the clerk's office. I am available for any questions.
Counsel have any questions? Applicant?
Alex Shaler, four hundred North Ashley Drive. Nothing further to add, but happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, any questions? Is there anybody in the public that wishes to speak to item fifty-six? Mr. Cagallione?
Move to close.
Do you want to speak to this? No? Okay, you're leaving, okay, good. We have a motion to close from counsel Miranda, a second from? Counselman Vera, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, the eyes have it. Counselwoman Hurtak.
File number R E Z twenty-five dash sixty-six. Ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption, and ordinance rezoning property in the general vicinity of one-oh-one, one-oh-five, one-oh-nine, and one-eleven North Meridian Avenue, eleven-oh-five East Washington Street, and one-oh-two, and one-oh-six North Twelfth Street in the city of Tampa, Florida, and more particularly described in section one from zoning district classification, C D two channel district to C D two channel district, retail sales, shoppers' goods, residential, multifamily, and hotel, providing an effective date.
Second. We have a motion from counselwoman Hurtak, a second from counselman Miranda. Please record your vote.
Motion carry unanimously with Manas Gaco being absent at vote.
Thank you.
And I also move the resolution.
Second. We have a motion from counselwoman Hurtak, a second from counselman Vera. Remove the resolution, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, the eyes have it unanimously, thank you very much. Item fifty-seven, staff.
Stephanie Pope Development Coordination. Item number fifty-seven is R E Z twenty-five sixty-seven. This item is a rezoning request for the property located at seventy-four oh two North Hutton Place. The request is to rezon from R S sixty residential single-family to R S fifty residential single-family. I am available if you have any questions.
Okay, any questions? Hearing none, is there an applicant? Seeing none. Is there anybody in the public that wishes to speak to this item? None. Counselman Miranda, move to close, second from? Counselman Vera, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, the eyes have it unanimously. Counselman Miranda.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Fifty-seven, file number E Z twenty-five dash sixty-seven, order being for second reading, adoption. An ordinance rezoning property in general vicinity of seventy-four oh two North Hutton Place in the city of Tampa, Florida, more particularly described in section one from zoning district classification, R S fifty, sixty residential single-family to R S fifty residential single-family, providing an effective date.
Thank you, we have a motion from counsel Miranda, a second from? Counselman Vera, please record your vote.
Motion carry unanimously with Manas Gaco being absent at vote.
Thank you so much. Item fifty-seven? No, those were... I'm sorry, fifty-eight. Fifty-eight. You guys are so confusing me. Yeah, that's, I looked up there too, and I saw fifty-seven. Okay, fifty-eight.
Stephanie Pope Development Coordination. Item number fifty-eight is R E Z twenty-five sixty-eight. This item is a rezoning request for the property located at thirteen-twenty West Arch Street. The request is to rezon from R S fifty residential single-family to P D Plan Development, residential, single-family semi-detached. Revisions have been completed and certified plans have been submitted to the clerk's office. I am available if you have any questions.
Does counsel have any questions? Applicant?
Hi, good morning, council members. My name is Giselle Moda, I'm the authorized agent on the application representing the applicant. I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Stephanie, can you raise your right hand and be sworn in by our clerk, please?
Oh, are you asking me?
Giselle, or me?
Yeah.
I was sworn in.
Oh, it's so weird, I'm looking at the thing, and y'all look so much alike on my little teeny tiny monitor. Very good.
No worries, yep, I have my right hand up.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you are about to provide is a truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, state your name again, please.
Giselle Moda.
Thank you, and just here for answer questions, is that what I heard?
Correct, yes, sir.
Okay, very good, thank you so much. Does anybody have any questions? Okay, thank you for showing up. Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to speak to this item?
Move to close.
A motion to close from counsel Miranda, a second from?
Second.
Counselman Carlson, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, the eyes have it.
I move number fifty-eight, file number R E Z twenty-five dash sixty-eight. Ordinance being presented for second reading, adoption, ordinance rezoning property in general vicinity of one-three-two-zero West Arch Street in the city of Tampa, Florida, and more particularly described in section one from zoning district classification, R S fifty residential, single-family to P D Plan Development, residential, single-family semi-detached, providing effective date.
Second. Thank you, we have a motion from counsel McCarrollson, a second from counsel Miranda. Counselman Vera, you were absent at the first vote. I'm just to make sure you review the record, you're ready to vote. Very good, thank you so much. Please record your vote.
Motion carry unanimously with Manas Gaco being absent at vote.
Thank you, a motion to move the resolution. We have a motion from counsel McCarrollson, a second from counsel Miranda. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, the eyes have it unanimously, thank you. Item fifty-nine.
Stephanie Pope Development Coordination. Item number fifty-nine is R E Z twenty-five sixty-nine. This item is a rezoning request for the property located at fifty-four oh eight North Havana Avenue and fifty-four eleven North Paddock Avenue. The request is to rezon from R S fifty residential, single-family, and C G commercial general to R M eighteen residential multifamily. I'm available if you have any questions.
Any questions? Hearing none, applicant? Hello there.
Good morning, Eileen Rosario. I have nothing else to add to this, just I would like to thank you for your approval.
Thank you so much.
A motion to close.
Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to side him?
Second.
Hearing none, we have a motion closed from counselman Vera, a second from counselman Carlson. Counselman Vera, please. Second from counselman Miranda. All those in favor? Yeah, sorry. Counselman Vera, would you like to read this?
Yes, sir, moving ordinance presented for...
All those in favor closing, say aye. Aye, opposed, the eyes have it, thank you.
Yes, sir, hereby moving ordinance rezoning property in general vicinity of fifty-four oh eight North Havana Avenue and fifty-four eleven North Paddock Avenue, city of Tampa, Florida, more particularly described in section one from zoning district classification, R S fifty residential, single-family, and C G commercial general to R M eighteen residential, multifamily, providing an effective date.
We have a motion from counselman Vera, a second from? Counselman Miranda, all those in favor? I'm sorry, please record your vote.
Motion carry unanimously with Manas Gaco being absent at vote.
Thank you, item number sixty.
Stephanie Pope Development Coordination. Item number sixty is R E Z twenty-five seventy-nine. This item is a rezoning request for the property located at forty-eight twenty-three and forty-eight twenty-five West Flamingo Road. The request is to rezon from R S sixty residential, single-family to R M eighteen residential, multifamily. I'm available if you have any questions.
Does counsel have any questions? Hearing none, is there an applicant? Is there anybody in the public that wishes to speak to item number sixty?
Good morning, Stephanie Pointer. I just briefly looked at this, and one reason why I'm not making a stink about this particular project is because this area took on a lot of water during Helene, and they're taking out older homes and replacing them with homes that are going to be built to the B F E. So, this is, I mean, this is just part of life. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Is there a motion closed? A motion closed, counselwoman Hurtak, a second from counsel Miranda. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, the eyes have it, counselwoman Hurtak.
File number R E Z twenty-five dash seventy-nine. An ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption, and ordinance rezoning property in the general vicinity of forty-eight twenty-three and forty-eight twenty-five West Flamingo Road in the city of Tampa, Florida, and more particularly described in section one from zoning district classification, R S sixty residential, single-family to R M eighteen residential, multifamily, providing an effective date.
Second. We have a motion from counselwoman Hurtak, a second from counsel Miranda. Please record your vote.
Motion carry unanimously with Manas Gaco being absent at vote.
Thank you, item sixty-one.
Stephanie Pope Development Coordination. Item number sixty-one is R E Z twenty-four sixty-eight. This item is a rezoning request for the property located at three-oh-seven South Melville Avenue. The request is to rezon from P D Plan Development to P D Plan Development for residential, single-family detached. Revisions have been completed and certified plans have been submitted to the clerk's office. I'm available if you have any questions.
Counsel have any questions? Hearing none, applicant?
Steve Michelini representing the petitioner. Respectfully requesting your approval, and I'm available for any questions.
Any questions? Is there anybody in the public that wishes to speak to item sixty-one?
Move to close.
We have a motion to close from counselman Miranda, a second from? Counselman Vera, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, the eyes have it unanimously, please record your vote. Oh, no, that's your card. Counselman Miranda, would you like to read item sixty-one?
Item number sixty-one, file number R E Z twenty-five dash, excuse me, sixty-one is file number R E Z twenty-four sixty-eight. Order is being presented, second reading and adoption. An ordinance rezoning property in general vicinity of three-oh-seven South Melville Avenue in the city of Tampa, Florida, more particularly described in section one from zoning district classification, P D Plan Development, P D Plan Development, residential, single-family detached, providing an effective date.
Thank you, we have a motion from counsel Miranda, a second from? Counselman Vera, please record your vote.
Motion carry unanimously with Manas Gaco being absent at vote.
Thank you, like a motion to open the ten-thirty?
So moved.
Thank you, counsel.
We have a motion from counsel Hurtak, and a second from counsel Miranda, open the ten-thirty a.m. public hearings. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, the eyes have it. I came to that in my mind while you were prompting me. Thank you. Good morning.
Ross Sammons Development Coordination, presenting file number V A C twenty-five dash eighteen for first reading and consideration. The applicant is city of Tampa. This is a proposed vacating request to vacate the alley lying north of Twig Street, south of Zack Street, east of Jefferson Street, and west of Nebraska Avenue. This application was filed August fourth, twenty-twenty-five. Right-of-way is currently unimproved and approved, it's half and half situation there. This right-of-way was created by subdivision plat.
Hold on one second. C T T V, could you display the wolf on the council member's screens, please? Because that type is really small.
Yes.
The wolf. Looks like everybody's got a bit of us.
The monitors, if you could put it on the monitors, please. Council's monitors.
Something's happening. Yeah, yeah. Well, they're trying to do something because their screen's like blinking.
Nope, stars.
Still waiting for the display on the council monitors at the dais. Anybody want to say? Question, Yanta?
Sure.
Counsel McCarrollson.
Could you, maybe this is a question for legal, but could you just clarify, please? I can kind of read what you have up there. Wait.
Oh, there you go. Marty, all I'll take you to do is touch that door. Good job.
Very good. Thank you, C T T V. Okay.
So, on the, on the, can I go ahead? So, on this background, it talks about the agreement that the city has with the Accardys. Can you just clearly state though, and we could ask legal instead if you want, but the, the agreement does not automatically give this. It only is contingent on this because this is a quasi judicial.
Yeah, the agreement's contingent upon...
Because there was some misinformation that, that this is, that this decision today is requ, is, is in exchange for something. But this is a quasi judicial hearing by itself, and, and it has to be, the decision has to be made separate from any agreement. Correct?
Correct.
Legal want to?
Becca John's legal department, that's correct. The agreement does not require that you approve the vacation. If the vacation is not approved, then the agreement terminates.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that's clear, because there was a lot of misinformation about that out there, and this is a separate decision that has to be done on its own merit. Thank you.
Do you want to continue with the presentation?
Sure. This right-of-way was created by subdivision plat and by acquisition. And again, per agreement with the Curry Properties LLC, they own all the surrounding properties around the Jackson House, and they have agreed to convey two ten-foot strips of property on each side of the Jackson House, and this is to utilize for repair and maintenance. And again, it's subject to this approval of this vacating. The existing right-of-way is approximately nine thousand four hundred seventy-eight square feet. Here is an aerial view of the alley requested to be vacated in yellow from Nebraska here, in this north-south section here. It's an atlas sheet showing the requested vacating here in red. And as you can see in the block, there's previous vacatings here. Subject alley in red here in the original plat. And I've included an exhibit from the agreement showing those ten-foot strips on, on each side of the Jackson House property. Here's an image looking south from east Zack Street. An image looking east from the alley. It's an image looking west from Nebraska Avenue. Here's another image looking northwest in the block, the Jackson House here. Staff has no objections to this vacating request. Easement reservation is required by Frontier. Special conditions, natural resources, must comply with chapter twenty-seven as regards to tree preservation, site design, for any improvements placed to adjacent trees in vacated area. That concludes my presentation, I'm available if you have any questions.
Counsel McCarrollson.
Yeah, can you put up the, the, one of the slides that shows what the current configuration is, please? And I'll just...
Would it be this one?
Yeah, that's one of them.
Mm-hmm.
So, although in theory someone could drive through here, as you showed in the pictures, the whole thing looks like a parking lot already, and then the previous part, which was the original plat to the west, has already been vacated.
Correct.
And so, it is, the, the existing right-of-way is surrounded by, it, it, does, do the Accardys own all the property around it except for the Jackson House?
They do. And that's kind of the reason I pointed to, that it's unimproved and improved because some of it obviously is, is parking, and some of it is grass in between the parking areas, so...
So, let's say you somehow could come in on Zack, then you'd have to make like a
Correct.
Hundred-and-twenty-degree turn to...
Yeah, it's...
And so, it's not really navigable at this point. Also, typically in a vacation, the, half of the, half of the property goes to each side, and so, how much, how much additional property will the Jackson House get as a result of this? It's not just the Accardys that are going to get extra land, correct? It's the Jackson House as well?
Yeah, approximately seven feet. If it does revert, and the city doesn't really get into how property reverts in this, most cases it does from the center line, in this case, it is from one plat, and so, it more than likely will...
Could I get, you guys are nodding over there, do you have anything else to add to that? Just, I just want to make it, make it clear that this is a benefit to the Jackson House also.
Ron Wigginton, legal department, yes, so as long as they are abutting the alleyway and considering the fact that this right-of-way is contained within one plat, they would get their section between their sidelines going to the middle of the alleyway?
And then this extra ten feet on each side, would the city control the extra seven feet behind those two rights away, additional rights away, or would the Jackson House control it?
It would be the Jackson House. I don't believe the city owns anything other than, there's some parcel over to the left, I believe. It was the north and south alleyway that the city may own and fee. But, no, sir, for this particular section, it would be the Jackson House Foundation that would have that.
So it gives the, it gives the Jackson House room, it, even though in theory somebody might be saying that they lose the alley, the alley's not really navigable right now. But the bonus is that they get an extra seven feet, so now they can get behind the building and have access to it in addition to the, the, uh, the, the, the land that the city negotiated.
That is the benefit for that, however, the Jackson House Foundation does need to take the necessary steps to make sure that is included in their parcel.
Okay, how do we make sure they do that?
Well, I mean, I don't want to give them legal advice on how to do that, but, uh, the first, one of the good, first places to start would be the Hillsborough Property Appraiser's Office and to work with them to determine, uh, how they can get that on their parcel. And then they start paying property taxes on it as well.
Ms. Feeley, do you have something you want?
Councilman, we will work, I'm sorry, Abby Feeley, Administrator Development, and again, I have the opportunity, we will work with the Jackson House to ensure that they know.
Okay, I just want to make sure, they're just a nonprofit of volunteers, so I want to make sure that they know that they need to do that. All right, thank you so much, everyone.
Okay, does that complete the presentation?
Yes, thank you.
Do there any further questions? Is anybody in the public that wishes to speak?
Uh, good morning, Council, Steve McElhenney, I'm here on behalf of the Accardis. And, um, this has been a long time coming and we're glad to see that it's moving forward. This, uh, critical vacating of the, of the alley where the, the, the Accardis own all of the properties surrounding this except for that small section behind the Jackson House. And, uh, we are very happy to work with them. And as you know, that, uh, they've already been provided real land with real value and real property that was given by the Accardis to the Jackson House for access on both the east and the west sides of that structure. And, uh, when the council talked about, you know, giving them access and giving them a buffer, that's exactly what was provided. And the, uh, the, the alley as it is now bisects their property and prevents redevelopment efforts. So we appreciate support for this, uh, vacating and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
This is public comment, because this, the application is from the city, correct? The applicant is the city, so this is public comment. So.
Can I ask you a question or not?
No, it's public comment, I mean, yeah. Okay, is anybody else in the public that wishes to speak to this item?
Move to close.
We have motion to close from Councilman Miranda, second from? Councilman Carlson, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, eyes have it. Councilman Carlson, would you like to read this first reading?
Sure. Um, move item number sixty-two, file number VAC twenty-five dash eighteen. Ordinance being presented for first reading consideration, ordinance of the City of Tampa, Florida, vacating, closing, discontinuing, abandoning that alleyway located north of Twig Street, south of Zack Street, east of Jefferson Street, and west of Nebraska Avenue within the plat. Binkley's addition to Fort Brooke, a subdivision in the City of Tampa, Hillsborough County, Florida, as more particularly ascribed in section two hereof. Subject to certain covenants, conditions, and restrictions as more particularly set for, and providing for enforcement and penalties for violations, providing for definitions, interpretations, and repealing conflicts, providing for severability, providing effective date.
Thank you, we had a motion from Councilor Carlson, a second from Councilman Miranda, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, eyes have it unanimously.
Motion carried unanimously, second reading and adoption will be held on October ninth, twenty twenty-five at ten o'clock AM in City Council Chambers, three one five East Kennedy Boulevard, third floor, Tampa, Florida, three three six zero two.
Hold on one second. Councilman Miranda?
Maniscalco is actually.
No, I would, no, there's something else.
Oh, something else, okay, very good.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Councilor Carlson.
Could I just ask, um, if it's appropriate, could I just ask staff, when this comes for a second reading, could, in your presentations, could you just make that legal part clear? That it's, that this is not a, that, that, that this is not in a giveaway and exchange? It talks about the contract, but it doesn't clarify that. If you just had like one more sentence in there would help, I think, the public understand and clarify the confusion.
We'll clarify that.
Thank you so much.
Okay, um, we have an item sixty-four, but I believe this is Councilman Maniscalco's item, and so I don't really want to move that. And I know, I see that Michelle Van Loon is here, but I, I think I'd read the whole that waiting for his, uh, return to the council chambers because he is here. So how about, how about we go past that and let's go to, let's see if we can knock off some of the staff reports if the people are available. Okay. I wouldn't go too far, we're going to try to see if we can find it. Okay, very good, okay, so, so good. Okay, administrative update, I know there was some people that were prepared for administrative update, uh, online, are they online? Okay. Who wants to start? I don't see you.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
There we go.
Eric Hayden with TNI, just want to make sure you guys are up and, uh, if I can, if you could loan me the screen share, I'll actually share a little presentation for you.
Okay, go ahead.
Alrighty, Eric Hayden with TNI and, and good after, or actually, good morning, we got here early for lunch, it's actually great, so, good seeing you guys again. Good morning, Chair and council members and members of the public. Eric Hayden with TNI, and what I wanted to do was just kind of give you an update.
Eric, there we go. You go ahead, we, we resolved the technical issue, go ahead.
Okay. I wanted to go ahead and just give you a brief update on our OnBase project and current, current activities that are going on. As you guys are aware, this will only take a few minutes, but as you guys are aware, we actually went and engaged in a contract with OnBase, uh, back in February of twenty twenty-two, and it's to replace our sire legacy system. Uh, the sire system is our records management system, it's been in place for about nearly twenty years, it's quite old. It's, you know, one of the things we want to talk about is that between, uh, clerk's office, council legislative aides, and our records and archive teams, these are unsung heroes behind the scenes. That are, uh, working and managing just millions and millions of records that conduct city business. So it's really, really important that we provide them a very rock-solid, uh, platform for them, uh, that they can keep these image, or keep these records. Records are all types, everything from photographs to microfilm to, uh, paper documents, you name it, it all has to be digitized and so forth, so it's a huge, huge project. Uh, in the meantime, we have four solutions within OnBase that we focus on. Agenda management is one, that was implemented in twenty twenty-three. And what's coming new there that you'll see in October is boards and commission vacancies will now start being reported on, uh, agenda items, which you guys are looking forward to. That's going to start around October. As we move to document management, which is in process, uh, we have a target to finishing all of those four million documents by spring of twenty twenty-six. But we want to actually do something early, we want to actually index, you know, resolutions, ordinances, um, you know, CRA resolutions, uh, executive orders, when, all the things that are really important for people to get access to really quickly. We want to do that upfront as fast as possible while we're still indexing the rest of it. So while we're doing this, I'll give you a little quick demo of it. But the boards and commissions will go up, next are all the ordinances and everything, and then we're going to open a public access viewer, we call it the PAV, PAV. But that's going to be coming up hopefully just before Christmas of this year. Uh, and then what will happen is it'll, the PAV, which you'll see is a, is a product that allow people to actually do searches for, uh, lots of content, meeting dates, and you name it, to help bring back, uh, a lot of, uh, products that you guys actually endorse and, and execute. Another thing we'll be working with is Adobe, Adobe Sign integration, so that, uh, documents and the workflows between everybody, uh, between clerk's office, council, uh, the departments, purchasing, and so forth will have a better flow, and you'll be able to do online signatures. Uh, then lastly, quasi judicial, the quasi judicial hearing online forums, uh, that's coming up spring of twenty twenty-six. And what that'll do is, uh, allow for, what, right now, we have all sorts of input for when people or parties are actually engaged in quasi judicial hearings. You have materials, voicemails, mail, hard mail, electronic mail. You have different types of products that come in, and you have a lot of manual effort moving these products around, uh, so that you guys on council can actually see them and review them, approve them in movement forward. So tremendous amount of manual work behind the scenes. And what we want to do is help modernize that and help streamline a lot of that, so, uh, it makes it a lot easier for all staff that are involved. So with that, let me change my view for a second.
Hey Eric, while you're on that page, the Adobe Sign integration, does that mean for like the chair of signature for, uh, ordinances and resolutions, I can do it on Adobe?
Yes.
Okay, for those of you that have not had the privilege of signing all those documents, I know Charlie knows what that's like.
Why, I'm the chairman?
Yeah. I mean, I walked in there and there's, there's conference tables stacked filled with documents, it's crazy.
Absolutely, you guys are very familiar with the hybrid manual, where we have things online, we have things printed, then we have to sign them, and then we have to put them back online and index them, and then keep them for all post, all posterity. Uh, that's a lot of manual work, so all of this stuff is to help everyone that's involved in the legislative process and our records and archive, uh, maintain these for years to come. All right? So I'm going to show you really quickly a little bit of the viewer. I'm changing my view, can you actually see a browser now?
We can, yes.
Okay, good. This is a sample, we're still doing indexing, uh, as we mentioned a little earlier, and you heard Chief of Staff mention, uh, there are over four million items, uh, that, you know, the city clerk's office and records and, uh, and records and archive are actually maintaining for city business. And what we're doing is we can't keep them in one, uh, style, one version, one set of storage. You know, as technology evolves, you have to move all of this product forward and forward and forward, and so that you're maintaining it in searchable forms, retrievable forms, anything that can actually bring you product. If you don't, you lose the access, you lose the viewer, you lose the ability to actually see the product, and clerk's office and, uh, and the records and archives guys have it in physical form. But that's a very, very difficult way to bring products to the public for public information request or council request. So in this particular case, we can actually go through, and we're still doing indexing and so forth, um, we're going to take all resi, uh, we're going to take all document types that are CRA resolutions, and city executive orders, uh, city ordinances, and city resolutions. And we're going to actually index those first, so we can actually have access to that in the November, you know, Christmas timeframe. I wanted to give you guys a little preview, uh, and Chief of Staff, uh, you know, endorsed this, so thank you for the time to actually do this. But for instance, you know, you may not know exactly what the ordinance number or the reso number, but if you just, you know, went in and actually put in, uh, a, a particular title such as Verizon and so forth, what you'll get is a scoring, uh, search. So like ninety-eight percent, this is probably one of the documents you want to see. And you'll see all of these documents that are all recorded in a much more friendly user interface. And you click on it, you'll actually download the PDF, and you can actually have the whole print PDF, you can print it and so forth. Uh, if you want to refine your search, you know, and just not do every document that had the word Verizon in it or so forth, you could do, uh, you know, different types of wildcards, you can do different types of searches such as, I want to see Verizon and Trilave. Two companies working together, and instantly I get that one reso, reso number twenty twenty-five through, you know, three eighteen. A lot of our constituents, a lot of, uh, you know, our customers, they ask for this type of capability and the speed at which to do the searches because it really, really is aggravating us, the customer experience. If they're having to wait, you know, minutes and minutes, and they get, you know, all sorts of incorrect search returns and everything. So as you'll see, you know, you can even boil down to, that's any document, but you can boil down to CRA resolutions, you can do executive orders. So all of these things will make it so much easier for people to get access to the records that, uh, the legislative group is actually processing through. With that, I wanted to kind of keep it a little bit brief because we still are indexing, we still are finalizing all of the, uh, the data stores behind the scenes, which is really important. Because if we finish all of those searches and everything, then we can open up the PAV, uh, much sooner for everyone. All right, so that's, just wanted to let you take a peek at that. And then let me go back to the slide for a second. Okay, and then ongoing, of course, we're doing continual updates with Highland, uh, software, uh, we'll have, you know, we'll continue to ADA enhancements, AI improvements. Uh, there's some new AI types of things, nothing like full AI, but the AI assisted or AI enhanced services where it will help with, uh, you know, content insights. Instead of just filling in fields and so forth, sometimes you can actually type in, uh, plain text and say, hey, I want, you know, a resolution from this date to that date and so forth. And with large language models and chatbots and so forth, these types of things are much easier to do in the future. And of course, other security and miscellaneous updates. And with that, I wanted to keep this brief for you and so forth, and just give you a taste of what's coming. Uh, and with that, I want to close the, the prezo and just open the door for any questions you may have.
Does the council have any questions? Councilwoman Hertak?
I don't have any questions, but I wanted to say thank you, I mean, this is a giant lift, and, uh, I know how, how much it's taking your department, and I just want to say thank you so much for it. And I know that there are a lot of folks in the public who will really look forward to being able to find, um, this information, thank you.
You're very welcome.
Councilor Carlson?
Yeah, same thing, uh, thank you for making it easier for us to find things. Is it possible, um, to make this, um, accessible to Google so that people can search from the outside and get access to the same documents?
Uh, this will be available outside, uh, let me check on that for you, uh, Councilor Carlson. Sometimes Google already have certain types of connections with us, but the other things we can actually, and Google's a marketing, uh, platform as you're aware, so what they're looking for is, is who wants to, uh, enhance their searchability by raising themselves up to the top of list and things. So we just have to see what interfaces, uh, are available for us to do with Google.
And sorry.
It's a good way to reach it, and it is available for any public, uh, once we turn it on.
Yeah, and, and sorry if you mentioned this already, but transcripts will be included in there too?
Uh, no, just right now, the four, the four documents that are searchable are, uh, CRA resolutions, reg, regular city resolutions, ordinances, and executive orders. Now, if you go to, if you're talking transcripts from the meetings, that's always available, uh, from our YouTube, uh, indexing. So depends on the transcripts you're speaking to specifically.
Yeah, it would, and you said, you said that agendas are searchable too, right?
Uh, yes.
And, and the backup, are the backups to agenda searchable as well?
Um, backups is, I don't know that question.
The PDF.
I'll get that, I'll get.
But mo, most of the time, when I'm trying to find something, and the same thing when constituents call, is they want to find something on the agenda, the backups to the agenda or the transcript. And, um, and all the rest of it is important too, but it would be great if it was somehow integrated so that all of that would pop up at the same time for the, for a particular item. Thank you.
Oh, absolutely, all good ideas. Uh, what I'll do is I'll have that team actually reach out to the office so that they can actually get a lot of these requests, so that if there's any difficulty you guys or your teams are having, uh, helping provide service and new searches, uh, we want to make sure we streamline that, so that's very fruitful.
And, and, and one more thing, I know you're archiving the YouTube videos on YouTube, but if there's a way to include the links in, in that search also, that would make it even easier for everyone so they could find the transcript, the documents, the agenda, and, um, the YouTube link.
Thank you, Eric, good presentation. I can't imagine how much, uh, the task, it seems overwhelming from, from, in my mind, of, of being able to accomplish this, so great job with your team.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I believe J.C. is coming up, is that true?
That is my understanding.
All right.
And I, and we speak, and there he is.
If you need me, I'm still standing by.
Thank you, Eric. Good morning, sir.
All right. Good morning, J.C. Hygerson, uh, Chief Building Official, Construction Service Center Manager. All right, if I can get screen access. There we go. All right.
Looks good on our side.
Okay, great. All right, um, so this is kind of, uh, been, uh, something we've been trying to do and integrate with another, um, group. So I, I definitely have to give a lot of the, the, all the, the work to the Hillsborough County Property Appraiser. Um, over the years, our Acela system, which is our permitting system, we send information, we send a, a digest to the property appraiser site. So, um, when we met with, uh, G-Tars, we were looking into enforcement and property, um, concerns we were having for illegal construction, you know, we knew this was kind of coming down the pipe. We weren't quite sure when, um, but now, um, as of April of this year, if you go to the Hillsborough County Property Appraiser's site, you can, you're able to pull up the permit information. So a lot of people don't know to come to Acela, they don't know to come to find out our active permit map and things like that. So we wanted to increase the transparency and be able to show it on multiple, uh, websites. So just real quick, um, I didn't want to go through a live demo because I know how that can get a little tricky, um, but I did want to steal a few screenshots. So, um, just take where, where, where you all are downtown, um, third, uh, three fifteen East Kennedy. Once you click on the parcel, you can click on the, the parcel link there, you scroll down, after it gives you the property appraiser information, square footage and all of that, there's an actual tab that says permits. And so once you have that permit tab, it lists all the permits, it shows ten, we have lots of more, uh, permits on, obviously on that property down there with City Hall and T-MOF. But, um, you click on any of those, and then it takes you straight to our seller page to show you the status of that permit, whether it was complete, expired, anything like that. So ideally, um, from the Realtor point of view, they come in and say, hey, you know, new, you know, they're trying to sell a property from someone and it says newly renovated. And, you know, they can do a quick search using the, uh, property appraiser site to see the permit history that was listed there. So our intent is just to be able to, to provide transparency and, and like I said, just another, um, tip of the cap to, um, Hillsborough County Property Appraiser, because they, they did all the heavy lifting, I just get to do all the sharing. So, um, I'm here for any questions.
Thank you, is the, uh, integration, is, is this, uh, hands-free, so the, the software applications talk to each other?
That is correct, so it is, it is directly, you log in, uh, you click the link, like I said, I don't like doing live demos, but hey, you click on it, you click right there, takes you right to the permit screen, and as you see all the other information, and you scroll right down. you scroll right down, you can click any record in here, you click that permit and it takes you right to the ACA site. So there's no logging in, no having to go anywhere else, and then it'll tell you, you know, all the information that anybody normally sees. Permit's been issued, show when it was issued, you can see the status, who pulled it, all of, all of that information. So like I said, you don't have to go out to another site, you know, everything is integrated. So once you, you go to the property appraiser, you click on the site, click on the parcel and it takes you right where you need to go.
Yeah, it's crazy that this offer of applications work with each other. That's pretty cool. Very good. Well, I appreciate the presentation. Anybody have any questions? Thank you. Yeah, great, great, great work. Excellent. I'm sure that'll be well received by everybody. Okay, we're going to move on. Let's see, item number 66. Do we have anybody from the?
We're, we're down to council members. We can't like, yeah. Well, I mean.
What?
Yeah, that's going to require all of us because right now we have two no votes.
Yeah, oh, okay.
How about 70? It looks like Mr. Campbell's here.
70 should be non-controversial.
I hope so.
Well, and I'm sure they would want to be here for that, but you know what?
That's good, we think so.
There we go, we'll do 70.
All right. Good morning again, council. Brandon Campbell, Mobility Department, here to speak on item number 70, which is our monthly stormwater maintenance report to provide some highlights from the report that All right, I just wanted to highlight.
Can you do just a little bit less?
Sure thing.
So we can get the whole page.
There we go.
Thank you.
Just wanted to highlight a few of the stats that have come through, particularly through the month of August, and especially how they differ from last year. As you well remember, last year we had tropical impacts starting in August with Tropical Storm Debbie and then September with Hurricane Helene and then October with Hurricane Milton. And you can see how that impacts the level of, of call volume that, that we get for service and how that then consequently redirects our attentions to more acute issues as opposed to the routine maintenance that we are thankfully able to, to work on with, with a little bit more focus right now. It is, it is a good surrogate measure, just looking at the number of calls to, to sort of track how the tropical impacts or non-tropical but, but high rain event impacts have affected us as a city over the course of the last two years. For the month of August, we had 311 calls for service as compared to last year with 665. Obviously that is less than half. And we're hoping for a similar trajectory through the remainder of the year, but we are prepared for that to be either the case or not the case. As always, in our report, we do list the neighborhoods that we have been working within. Still fairly new is our work order map that is published also on the website. So these neighborhoods should correspond fairly closely with what you see as executed work orders on the one map, and then on a subsequent page, there should be, well, maybe a little less overlap, but some overlap between those that we plan to and open calls for service. Over the month of August, we dug out about a mile and a half of, of ditches, removing 562 tons of debris in that operation. We also mowed 127 ponds and sprayed 116 ponds. I know that there have been some questions in chambers about, you know, what does it mean to, to maintain ponds versus, you know, what's a more extraordinary effort? When we say that we are maintaining ponds, these are the things that we are primarily focused on. If there are more extraordinary needs, those, those come as we would with other, other sort of work items as a, as a distinct and separate effort. Cave-ins, I know we've talked about on several different occasions, and I do have a good picture from the report of one of the cave-ins that the team had worked on in the month of August among the 12 that they completed. And then last, I wanted to highlight our headwalls. I know there's also been some questions asked of me, what exactly is a headwall as opposed to other structures? And I have more pictures, again, from later in the port, the report of good examples of headwalls. Headwalls basically are the interface between a pipe and a ditch where we have a concrete structure that helps to reduce the erosion at that interface, whereas a box would be the interface between two different pipes and sort of a junction of, of separate pipe Street sweeping, we did have 340 tons of debris removed from the streets. Again, that is debris that may otherwise end up in the, the remainder of the stormwater system, ditches, ponds, pipes that we're able to get with the street, the street sweeper in an efficient way and as required by our, our permit. And then, of course, before I leave this page, I wanted to highlight, if you have a, a need for service, you are welcome to call our, our customer service line at 813-274-3101. It's answered 24 hours a day by staff during business hours and by an answering service after hours. We have a lot of pictures in the report itself. I did not want to belabor that, but I had a couple of them that I wanted to show because I thought they were relevant to some other items of discussion. This is a cave-in repair that our in-house crews performed this month. You can see that it is substantially different from just a pothole repair that, that would be done by other crews. It required a backhoe and, and significant digging. There are, there were interim steps here that were not necessarily captured by the pictures, but this does give an idea of the, the fact that this is a more significant effort than just simply filling in a pothole. And then last, later in the series of pictures on that report is this, this was really meant to highlight ditch digging, but I brought it because those questions had come up about what exactly is a headwall. You can see where the gentleman is standing in the middle picture, he's actually standing on top of that headwall to access the, the area that he's digging out in front of the pipe, but that is what, what that headwall is. It keeps that soil behind it from washing into the system. So that said, I will be happy to take any questions.
Councilwoman Hertak.
Just a quick question about debris. So all that debris, does that go to the waste of energy facility?
No, it's generally like a soil-based debris, so it typically goes to, to the landfill.
Oh, wow. Okay. So, so there's some increased cost there?
Yes.
Okay, good to know. And then just to say that I am, I have been working with Brandon on changing and improving the report and we'll be seeing those as I, as we go forward. Now that I am Chair of Mobility, I'm kind of diving right in to learn more about mobility and stormwater, but if there are particular things that you all are interested in, as we kind of work on this, we can, we can share some of those demos with, with you all just to get some feedback as we continually improve the report. And I want to just thank you again for coming in person right now while people are still recovering. This is so important and it really helps people. The report, again, is available right on the Mobility website if you scroll down to the bottom. So it's not only the stormwater, there's also a sidewalk and a road repair.
Yeah, it's, it's side by side, yes.
Yes, they're side by side and I highly recommend people take a look at them. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Miranda.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This morning, there was an individual that came in and made some statements regarding that some of these have never been cleaned, that they're not ready to go, that you're going to suffer if a hurricane comes, especially in the industrial area where we have the big pumps and so forth, and I appreciate you verify that they are done.
Okay.
Because if we had an allegation, I don't want that to go by.
Understood.
I appreciate that's number one. Number two.
Happy to talk to you offline as well.
On Swan Avenue, there was, there's a hospital there and there's some, one told me the other day that they don't know if that pump is ready to work, and I'm just saying what they told me, this is not me, but I just want to carry on to you and I want to be sure those whole things are checked out before the weather gets any worse.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Councilman Carlson.
I've seen this street sweeper machines all over the place. Maybe it's just because it's around my neighborhood or something, but I have had people comment that they're happy to see those, so thank you to that. Plus, they're always happy to see the, the crews that are out cleaning facilities or repairing facilities. The, to Councilmember Hertak's request or question about simplifying and providing information, what would be really cool is to have something like a, a wheel or a diagram that showed the seven-year cycle and whether we're, how far we are on that, because I think you're, you're trying to speed some things up. And so it would just be interesting to see, but also to set expectations, we're not going to get to every part of the city, and this is based on what you told us, we're not going to get to every part of the city over a 12-month or 24-month period. We've, it's, it's a full cycle of seven years. And you didn't say, this is my words from looking at documents I've seen, but it's obvious that areas, many areas were not maintained in the last 10 years. And so we, we set that aside and only look at the future, you all are working forward, and so it'd be interesting for the public to see where we are on that cycle. And if you're ahead of it, then we, we ought to make sure we celebrate that. And, and I don't know if there's a, a cycle by district or by neighborhood or something like that, but it'd be interesting for people to see how, how that's going along, just, just in a simple graphic depiction. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Miranda, you want to say something else? No, no. Okay, very good. Thank you, Brandon. Appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, let's see, we're waiting for Michelle to come back and then we're going to take up item 64. And then we could probably do, when Michelle gets back, we'll knock out 68 too, because that's.
68's done.
Is it done?
Yeah.
Oh, never mind, 68 we passed. Okay, very good. Line that out.
Yeah, and then 72, but we're here. 72? Oh.
Do you want to move to 72? Let's go.
Yeah.
72.
Vieira's not here, but hopefully he'll come back.
Yeah.
Oh, Ms. Van Loon is here. Don't sit down.
Yeah, come on, we're going to start with you. Item number 64.
He's on site. I, oh, there, sorry. Okay, good morning.
He's on site, you're right, he's right here, on site.
Good morning, Chair and Council.
We're going to put Velcro on that seat.
Michelle Van Loon, Real Estate. This morning is a first reading for an honorary naming in honor of Jay Levy, Jay Leonard Levy and George Levy. It is for the placement of an honorary street name sign at the southeast corner of North Heims and West Ohio Street. Our staff made their presentation on August 7th, 2025. We then posted on our website August 8th through August 25th per the ordinance. We did not receive any comments and I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Councilman Maniscalco.
No, thank you very much. These two gentlemen, I didn't meet George Levy, but I met Leonard Levy, right where you're standing, like right, he was sitting in the front. And they were so, I don't know how to describe it. Growing up as a kid, you would always hear these names. And I don't know if, when Mayor Greco was mayor back in the day, he had a group called the Magnificent Seven, and I don't know if both of them or one of them was, he had like this core inner circle. But anyways, their impact on the community is, is huge, you know, with sports and beyond and giving back and helping and with nonprofits, it's, I could go on and on. So thank you for all your work and I know the family's very excited. They might be here on second reading to speak, but.
Councilmember Miranda.
Thank you very much. In fact, this was really brought on by Mr. DJ Gantufus, who's the one that started it. And we ran it through the process and this is the final end before it's put up. But thank you, everybody, but it was, give credit to Mr. D.C. Gantufus.
Very good. Well, thank you so much, Councilman, I'm sorry, Councilman Carlson.
Yeah, I just wanted to add to that, you know, they were deeply involved in the community in many, many ways back in the time before social media, and so not everybody would have seen all the things they were doing, but they were involved in just about every important thing that happened in Tampa during that time, including bringing football here. So thank you to them and their families for their contribution.
Councilmember Miranda.
And I'm not trying to in any way disrupt what you said, but they were social media, they were themselves a social media, they, they were everywhere.
Is anybody in the public that wishes to speak to item 64?
Motion to close.
We have a motion to close from Councilmember Miranda, a second from Councilman Maniscalco. Councilman Maniscalco, would you like to read item 64?
Thank you very much. Having an ordinance being presented for first reading consideration, ordinance of the City of Tampa, Florida approving the placement of an honorary street naming sign at the intersection of North Heims and West Ohio Avenue in Tampa, Florida to honor Jay Leonard Levy and George Levy providing an effective date.
We have a motion from Councilman Maniscalco, a second from Councilmember Miranda. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it unanimously. Thank you very much.
Motion carried unanimously with Vieira and Hertak being absent at vote. Second reading and adoption will be held on October 9th, 2025 at 10 o'clock a.m. in City Council, City Council Chambers, 315 East Kennedy Boulevard, 3rd floor, Tampa, Florida, 33602.
Okay, very good. I see Abby Feely is here and ready for 72, so we'll just skip right ahead. Well, I know, but why?
I think it's a quick vote.
Okay, okay, you want to, is there, you want to move to item 66? Let's go to item 66. Yeah, that's all right. 66 and 67 will be next, yes. Okay, item 66, is there staff to present for item 66?
All we're doing is passing a resolution for funding.
So we don't need staff, right? Okay.
May I have a motion to that effect?
Okay, Councilman Vieira.
To proceed with item.
Second.
Okay. We have, we, we have a motion to move item 66.
To move the resolution.
We have item to move 66 and 67?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we have a motion for Councilman Vieira to move item 66 and 67. A second from Councilmember Miranda. Roll call vote, please.
Can I just say something?
Okay.
Yeah, Councilmember Hertak said something earlier. I'm not against accepting the money, but I'm against the project in general. I, I don't believe in subsidizing developers, so I'm voting no.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, roll call.
Yeah, I mean, I'll just state it again that I will not be voting for this just because the, the project is way overextended in money and quite frankly, this is going to be a multimodal network, safety improvement project, and Rome is not going to be fixed. It's so bad that I can't even bring my easy Sunday morning bike group to see what it is now because the, it's actually not going to be fixed. The, the intersection of Rome and Kennedy will have no bike protection even after this? So, so it's not even doing, that is the, one of the most dangerous intersections for cyclists. It will not be used and it will be dangerous. And so I've tried to fix it, but there's, but I mean, they already, they already sent these, these plans to the federal government, so it's not fixable. So I, I'm just very disappointed, even after, you know, we all agreed on it, I decided to dive in and learn about it, it's just not going to be safe for cyclists, especially for families. Not to mention just your average cyclist. So I, I, I just can't support something that's not going to fix a problem.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Carlson.
Yes.
Miranda.
Yes.
Maniscalco.
Yes.
Hertak.
No.
Vieira.
Yes.
And Clint Denny.
Yes.
Motion carried with Carlson and Hertak voting no.
Very good. Okay, so now we'll move to item 72.
Is this Abby?
Abby. Abby somebody?
I'm supporting her.
Okay, okay.
Good morning, council. I think this PowerPoint should be available on the screen, but if it's not, I have copies for all of you if you're interested.
We'll have to be brought up.
Okay.
Just say, please bring up.
Oh, okay.
It's like magic words.
Yeah. Emma Gregory, Legal Department, if.
There we go.
There it is.
They could clicker.
We'll take the copy, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Should we?
Yes.
Okay.
Start with your name.
Yes, Emma Gregory, Legal Department. So the first thing I'm going to do is review the ordinance and exactly what it requires. So Section 22103A sets out that when there, for residential structure, structures, there's a new single-family home or any major renovation, a sidewalk is required for commercial, industrial, office and mixed use, kind of in the same vein, when there's a new structure and expanding, an expansion of an existing structure, which results in a 25% increase in the existing square footage, a sidewalk is required. And for all other uses, a sidewalk is required when there's a site plan controlled zoning approval, an S2 special use approval, or any change in an existing use requiring 25% additional parking. So that is when the sidewalk requirement kicks in. So that's kind of the baseline for our code. So then, if we go to the next slide, so this is the definition of a major renovation under Chapter 27. So for residential structures, as I said, the sidewalk requirement kicks in for new, single-family or multifamily residential structure or use, or when there is a major renovation, which is any construction, reconstruction, structural alteration, expansion, enlargement, or remodeling, which, the total cost of which exceeds 51% of the assessed value of that property. So then, if we go to the next slide.
Councilmember Miranda.
I just want a clarification with 51% mean, because there's a lot of holes in it, as I see it, and not in your work, anybody else's work. But what is 51% of something? Is it a value, or is it a size of a lot, or size of a house? I just want to know, because I received an email the other day, and I checked my own record, I never said I hated sidewalks. I said why I voted how I had to vote in my, in my knowledge. I never hated anything. But go on.
Yes, so the definition says that it's 51% of the assessed value of the property.
Of the property, or of the reconstruction of the property?
Of the property.
Abby Feely. Typically, the assessed value includes both, the land and the structure.
Can, I just want an example, so that people don't call me, they can call everybody then. Just give me, it's a house that you want to remodel, and it's got three bedrooms, one bath, or whatever. And it's a value of the assessed value of the property after it's completed?
No, it's 51% of the assessed value when you come in to make the improvements. It kind of like, the same thing that we're doing with storm damage. And I think this motion came because of those properties that were being required to pay, or being required to install sidewalks due to storm damage permits being pulled. I think that's the purpose of the motion and the discussion today, was to look at, for those properties that have been making repairs due to storm damage.
Okay, I understand.
How are they being charged, what's being charged, and what's going on?
You cleared it up when you said the word storm damage.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
That's what this motion was today.
I'm just standing through, and I don't see storm damage, I don't think. But anyway, I appreciate it.
Okay.
Councilwoman Carlson.
Yeah, I forgot to set this up in the beginning, but the situation is, you know, a lot of people are rebuilding their homes. And I've had two or three cases of constituents who, because of the timeline of getting money from insurance and everything, they, they put in the permits later. There was that six, I think somebody talked about the six-month grace period, but they put in the permits later. And when that happened, suddenly, this new fee came into place. And the staff worked with them on it, but the purpose of my motion here is to, is to provide a clear guideline, so that staff doesn't have to make decisions on it, that we can, that we can just create a line on whether it's allowed or not. And the purpose here is only for, like what Carol Ann said, my purpose was to only talk, look at people who had homes, were living in the home, it flooded, and then, for whatever reason, they missed the six-month guideline. And the, and they, the excuses that I've, for the ones I've looked at, for not having a sidewalk, were confirmed by the city, I think, that they had a tree or something that wouldn't allow it to go there. And so that's why they had to pay the in-lu fee. So the idea here is, for those people who meet that narrow definition, that they wouldn't have to pay the extra fee. But anybody going forward, everybody else going forward would.
So, since we're still, it sounds like we're in the setup mode, instead of continuing the discussion. I'll say, my observation on this is, the council made a decision, whether you like it or not, and I'm still questioning whether I like it completely, about these fees. And then the city was very generous with the waiving fees after the hurricanes, for a lot longer than, I think, any municipality that I'm aware of. I mean, how long was the, were we waiving fees after the hurricanes?
We waived fees until March 1st, I believe. And then, what happened with some of this is that, in the interim, you all changed the sidewalk in-lu fee from the $29 a linear foot. So, and that happened in April. So anyone who had filed their permits prior to that, and triggered the installation of a sidewalk, either it was a fully new constructed home that had no sidewalks, and now was the time for them to put them in, or it was 51% of the major renovation, and the sidewalk was now required, they were charged the 29. We did not, we did not change the fee on them. Anyone who filed after that has been paying the new fee.
Right.
When you all closed the loophole in 22103 several years ago, there is now not a no-pay option, I think. And that's where, part of this discussion, if I am recalling correctly, came up, that, well, can't we just waive the fee for them, for the sidewalk? The way the ordinance is now written in 22, there is no no-fee. You either put in the sidewalk, or you pay the fee.
Right.
So I think the motion was, can we look at some sort of emergency approach, that there would be no payment of the fee? And that's what brought us back to you today to have this discussion. So we're here, I have some numbers on the storm permits, how many we had, how many pay, you know, I have some of those numbers, I have some numbers on what's in review right now. But I think we were taking direction from you, as to having this discussion, providing you with the information we could, and then hearing from you all on what the steps forward would be.
Councilwoman Carlson.
Yeah, I just want to clarify, my intention was to look at whether they should pay the old fee or the new fee. My intention was not to have them pay no fee.
Okay.
So if, the only question is, because of the timing of their application, if, I haven't had anybody complain about the old fee, it's just that, some of them were in process, and we may be talking only about a handful of people, but some of them were in process, but didn't quite make the deadline. And so, instead of having, had they applied a year ago when their houses were wiped out, they wouldn't have had to pay the new fee. And so it's just looking at that, that narrow subset. And, and if, if it's, if you think it's okay for staff to handle it, that's fine. I was just trying to find a way to create a clear goal, so that staff wouldn't have to make a judgment, or they could just say yes or no.
Staff doesn't have that ability, right? We've tied your hands, correct?
I don't know whether to pay the fee or not, this is just whether to pay the old fee or the new fee. And there's some, I think there's some gray area because of when they may have reached out to the city versus when they applied, and things like that, so...
Councilmember Miranda, then Councilwoman Hertak.
And here again, I try to think outside the box, and I understood what you said, it covers everybody. So then, it covers the one that just moved in, and unfortunately for that individual, and the 80% or 60% or 40% of the MIA, money's made that we just did a contract to, for a house for those individuals. And something happens to that house, either a car hits it, or catches fire, or hurricane, or whatever, they fall into the same umbrella, correct?
Anyone putting in a permit...
I heard you took an aspirated breath and words.
Anyone putting in a permit for new construction, after April 1st, will be paying the new sidewalk in-lu fee, the way that the code and the way that the permits are currently being handled. What I'm hearing on the other side from Councilwoman Carlson right now, is that, is there a way to be able to say, I'm coming in April 1st, but I'm a storm damage reconstruction? And what I'm hearing is, you would like for them to potentially pay the old fee of the 29, if they're asking to pay the fee. Is that correct, sir?
Not, 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 I don't think there should be difference as to whether, and I just brought this up for a discussion, so we can discuss and debate it. But it's not whether they ask or not, it's that if, if, if someone is, was in the house when it was destroyed, and, and they, they've applied to rebuild their own homes, because of insurance and FEMA and everything, it's taking longer than people expected. And if there are still a few people that, that put their permits after April 1st, then there would be some set, narrow guidelines to allow those folks, because they otherwise would have been able to apply for the permit before April 1st, that they would be grandfathered into the old fee. But anything new would, would continue to follow the new rules, that's all.
Councilwoman Hertak.
And I agree with Councilwoman Carlson, if there is a way that we can focus solely on the hurricane victims, and the people who are rebuilding, what, but I see that you, like, what are the, what are the constraints and concerns for hurricane victims in this?
So I'll just share a couple different scenarios with you. I think there, there may, there may be a way, I would have to think through it a little bit, as to homeowners that are rebuilding on their own properties.
Yes.
Okay, because I'll tell you, the second scenario I'm thinking of, I know of a home builder that acquired 48 different lots in South Tampa due to the hurricanes. They're going to come in and build 48 new homes. I would assume our intent is to get sidewalks on those 48 new homes. Now, a homeowner might live right next to them, that they are rebuilding on their own home, and we would have a house with a new sidewalk and a house that paid the fee, you know, that, this is where, I think, I would propose back to you, what is the intent? I know the intent is for us to get as many sidewalks as we can, and to finish out our system. So, trying to define what criteria would vest them to the prior $29 linear, $29 a linear foot, I think is part of the question. If I rip down my home today, and I want to rebuild, and I had nothing to do with storm damage, my obligation, if I don't already have a sidewalk, that's the other scenario, right? So we have some homes that have sidewalks, that they got demoed from the storm, and they're going to put back, and the sidewalk is already there. So that's kind of the breakdown I've been looking at, in terms of, the storm permits that we have for new residential was just over about 600. And I have a, I'm working through the query, because not all of them said storm damage, not all of them said, so some of that takes some unpacking of the actual permit records, to understand, this was the scenario, or that was the scenario. But I think if, if the directive is, you know, that we would like to find a way to ensure that if you suffered over 51%, you were considered substantially damaged, you're required to elevate and rebuild your home, and the next question would be, did you have an existing sidewalk? If you did, we'll leave it, then we have a sidewalk. If you don't have one, what does that look like, and are you going to put one in? Or, you don't have one, and you're seeking the in-lu. And then, at that point, that in-lu, what I'm hearing, would be preferred to be the 29 feet.
Yes, Ms. Sharp has a, an example that someone sent us.
Okay.
That she's going to put on the wolf. If we could have the wolf.
Activate the wolf.
Activate it. So, so this is an example, the, the house in question has the red dot, and then, the numbers, the dates, are when all those other houses were rebuilt, 2019, 2022, 2019, 2022, 2023. None of those have sidewalks. So the problem here is what Carol Ann brought up earlier, of people using the excuse of, well, there aren't connecting sidewalks. So we, we have to find that balance, so whatever that loophole is of, there are no connecting sidewalk, we need to take that loophole out. That loophole just cannot exist anymore. So, I, I think this, the sidewalk in-lu fee, as she brought up, the percentages of people who are now using that as their excuse, we just have to, we have to stop that. So, in this case, though, I mean, all those houses are new, so there's going to be nothing to connect.
All of those houses are new, but several are before you closed the loophole, and several are after. So after you closed it, I just want to be clear.
2022 and 2023, yes.
So after you closed it, we employed a, the form, and how it's being reviewed, and what the justification is, we track. I have a monthly report that comes to me, beginning of every month, tells me how many were waived, where they were, what the linear footage was, how much was paid, what the address is, and all of that. I'm in the process of mapping that for you, so you can actually see where this has been taking place. Prior to that, it's a little more difficult, right?
Sure.
Because there was the loophole, there was a no-pay, there was these other criteria. So, moving forward from where we are, I mean, I can, I can look, but I'm only going to be able to speak more specifically to what happened after, because that's what we now, given that change in 22, then we started tracking all of that.
And, and I appreciate that, and I, I think that's fabulous, and I'm thrilled to hear that you're doing that, because I do think the public will be interested. But just, you know, at, at one point, we just have to say, build the sidewalk unless there's an actual tree, or a ditch, or whatever the rationale is.
And I think one of your other prior considerations, if I'm recalling correctly, was also, is there a full sidewalk on the other side of the street?
Mm-hmm.
Because that, too, played a role in whether or not, if you have that connectivity, but it's just on the south side versus the north side, and we still have a connected system, that, too, is valuable in, you know, not, not always the ideal situation, but would we rather take the in-lu and complete what's on the other side of the street?
Yes.
Then, whatever. And, and I speak to this, and I know Brandon's still here, you know, construction services, we deal with it at the time of the permit, we collect the funds, the funds then goes to mobility. So while we are reviewing against what's in mobility's ordinance, we are mindful of how this plays into the whole system and everything like that. So...
Can I ask a question?
Thank you.
From staff's perspective, I know, because council went kind of like, hard on this, is, is, is there, have you observed that there's room for maybe a staff review, or is there, is there, is there something that we're missing, or if you, if you were going to create a more perfect ordinance, is there, would you grad have something different? Or would you create an appeal process, or a waiver process, or is there, is there something that you've observed that you'd like to see changed?
As far as the fee?
Well, the fee and the issues that we're bringing up today about some of the common sense applications, and like this one particular house we're looking at, or hurricane damage, the 50% plus, I mean, do you see...
That was a hurricane-damaged house.
Okay, okay. So is there, is there, do you see, do you see this as a real problem? Or are we just looking for, are we looking for, are we looking for a problem that doesn't exist?
I, I think we need to go back collectively and look at what the intent of this provision of the code is. And it does live in mobility, so I don't want to speak for Brandon. I mean, we've had other discussions, as this has continued to be at the forefront of our pedestrian safety and connectivity discussions over the years. You know, that is, that within a quarter mile or half a mile of a school, there's no exemption. I mean, we've got to get the sidewalks in, that's our priority. I mean, I think we need to know how these work together with what's in the plan and the priority system, in order to know how to best support both the city's efforts in making these connections, as well as the private property owners' obligations in making those connections, and how we move those things forward together.
So perhaps, in another month or so, we'll be six months past the implementation of this, and then, a year past the hurricanes. Maybe at that point, we could do a six-month check-in on these, this ordinance that we passed.
Sounds like she's doing that, she's trying to map together.
Yeah, but I mean, but I mean...
I mean, I can...
To come back to us, maybe if, at a six-month point, maybe we could have a suggestion of what the, you know, do a wellness check on, on what we did.
Six months?
Well, no, we passed the chain, I'm sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt, we passed the change in April, right?
Right.
So, April 17th, so...
Two months, two weeks.
Yeah, October 17th would be that six months from when we did it, to see how many, I mean, I get the monthly report, I know. It averages each month about five to seven properties that are paying the in-lu. I can't, off the top of my head, tell you, three of those are trees, and four of them are something. But I do have that information, and I'm happy to provide it.
How do we tie this up, and like, and, you know, so November 6th, so maybe we could have a motion to, to bring this back November 6th, with, with, with a, you know, an evaluation of, and the consequences? And Councilman Carlson, did you have something to add?
Yeah, Councilmember Hertak brought up a loophole to change the ordinance, which I agree with, but that would be appropriate for that other thing. Right now, because we're in the time, this question is about what to do about hurricane, and the problem, you were asking about the problem just now. So here's, here's what happens. You know, because people, people's houses, because they didn't have enough insurance, the right kind of insurance, they didn't get everything covered, they had a hard time collecting money.
I'm one of those people, I know.
Yeah, and so, and so they're, they're struggling to try to get the money to rebuild their houses, without having to just sell them in a fire sale. And, and so they finally get to that point, and then they go for the permits, and I don't remember the exact numbers, you can correct me on this, but, but then, the, the city says, okay, the city says, okay, you have to pay, if you can't build a sidewalk, you have to pay this twenty-four thousand dollar fee. And they said, twenty-four thousand dollars? Why is that? And then, at, at least in a couple cases, the staff said, well, it used to be eight thousand, but city council as of April first changed it to twenty-four thousand, and the people say, city council tripled the fee for hurricane victims? How, how, why would, why would city council triple the fee for hurricane victims? That doesn't make sense. So, that's where the question and problem came from.
Councilmember Miranda, and, and I think there's a possibility you can change, the, the individuals that had the disaster in their house and they had to rebuild and so forth, that, that are really struggling, I think you ought to take care of the ones that brought in and got your permit to rebuild the property, whatever it is, those are the ones that you could give, that you have to have your permit, that you went to the city, got your permit to be, to rebuild whatever damage was to your.
Councilman Maniscalco.
Yeah, what I was gonna say was, Councilman Carlson clearly detailed that it might be the same individual, but at least one person that has reached out to maybe all of us was, we're doing this, we're rebuilding, and here we get slapped with a twenty-four, twenty-five thousand dollar fee, and same thing, because council, whatever, I didn't vote for it, but it was a significant increase. At the very least, if we're not gonna waive it, because you mentioned, you know, if somebody comes in and buys forty-eight lots.
No.
And they're building all new sidewalks, and, you know, then you have a problem, because you're gonna have spotty sidewalks, but at least if, if we're not gonna waive it, allow those people that were damaged by the hurricane, what, in October, whenever it was, almost a year ago, and did their permits and got all their construction, in the, in the existing home, they're just trying to rebuild and stay in their home. It's not new construction, it's not, at least.
Or, lease construction for, for that home.
Yeah, but they're the original, the original names on the, on the deed, put them back to the, the previous fee before the increase. At least help them out, if you're not gonna waive it, you know.
Well, what, is, is, what about, what about creating, could we, could we today grant staff the authority to, to administratively waive fees till the end of the year for these, for, for these hardship?
There's no provision for that in the ordinance.
But, I mean, we could, we pass, we'd have to go through a whole legislative process to do that, is that?
That's what I would suggest.
Okay, okay. Councilman Vera.
Thank you very much. Yeah, no, I mean, I, I would clearly be supportive of this, I supported the original ordinance, I think it's great. I, I, I have no problem philosophically, ideologically, with, you know, putting regulations and, and different things on people that go for the greater good, so long as they're reasonable and narrowly tailored and so forth, just from a philosophical perspective, but I'm reminded of a book that was big in the late nineteen nineties called, remember, The Death of Common Sense, was it Howard, I forgot the gentleman who wrote it, Howard Phillips, I don't think it was, whatever his name was, but this could be one of those things where you have a very well-intended regulation or law that does great things, but there you have the exception where it has unintended consequences, and I think, given the tragedy that we, we went through a year ago, and God willing, we don't go through again, I, I do think that some reform of the process is, is warranted, that's very narrowly tailored, because again, we don't wanna undermine the revenue capacity, or I should say, the sidewalk capacity of the, of the laws passed, so I'm, I'm willing to support something.
So, go ahead, Ms. Phelan.
We're just talking, I, I have a couple ideas.
Okay.
One I hear, though, is an issue with twenty-two, one oh three, where you're not in favor of the criteria that talks about no other sidewalks on the street. So, I think that's, that, while that is not directly related to what y'all are talking about right now, and I'm gonna get to that right now in a second, that still, I think, needs to be handled with either working with Brandon and figuring out, you know, what that means, but, so that, that's one thing, and we'll kind of put that in a jar over here for right now. Okay, in relation to where we are right now, I was just talking with Emma, we could, we could do a couple things, and this is all right on the fly with you, right here, right now.
I like the fly.
One would be, we rescind where you changed the fee, and we make the effective date out later, and, and we say, what is, what is practical? Because I'm gonna tell you, I need guidance then on what really was storm damage and why I'm here, because everybody's gonna walk in and say, this was storm damage, and I don't wanna put the sidewalk in, and I wanna pay the twenty-nine dollars. And then it puts the onus onto staff, and unless we have clear, that's why I'm saying, if we're saying our entire community is hurting, let's look at this, and let's say, while we changed this April seventeenth, do we make it January first of twenty-twenty-six? Do we give people that time now that we see those permits are coming in to benefit from the twenty-nine dollars versus the two seventy-nine? And we just, that is one option. And, like I said, I'm standing here working with you right now on kind of what some of our options are. Or, as Emma stated, do we make the legislative change to somehow change it to speak to the hurricane victims, and then if we do that, how long is that gonna take, what happens in the interim, and are we still at the same place if we were just roll it back for a period of time? So, that are, are a couple on-the-fly options, right here at the podium with you this morning.
Hold on, hold on. Councilmember Miranda first, and then?
I have my light on.
He's, he's been on forever, though.
I had to.
Because he never turns his light on.
I know, but he waved at me earlier.
Okay.
Councilmember Miranda.
If I may, and I, if you wants to take it, take it first, I don't, I don't care about first or second.
Councilmember Miranda, you recognize?
But, let me, let me just say this, those individuals either had insurance or had FEMA conversation, and there's records of that, so they should bring those records, they don't have it, and if you do that, then that clears all that out. Somebody has to have some record of some time, you can get it, when you buy it, Home Depot or Lowe's or whatever, when they give you the certificate, they also give you the date that you bought it, so that's gotta be with it. You gotta have a bunch, concept's gotta there, but you have to have the proof, you can get it from whatever you bought, your lumber, your electrical, whatever, your drywall, your floor, then you have that, so you must bring that in. I'm sure they have that for their own taxes.
Okay.
And Councilwoman Hertek.
And, and basically, where I was, the reason I turn my light on is because I want to, what does that, what does that ordinance look like? What, what do, what do we need to do? And Councilwoman Miranda's right, it's, but it's really the people who came to you with the fifty-one percent. Like, it's not everyone, it's, it's the people who came to you with the fifty-one percent that, that we, the city designated, so we can easily look at those folks. This applies to the people who received a fifty-one percent letter.
There you go.
And that way, we, we have an ordinance that goes till the end of maybe this year, twenty-twenty-five, and if, if they've already paid it, they can be paid, they can, you know, get some money back for it. So, whatever it is, so I would like that ordinance, and Emma, if, I would, I'm sorry, Ms. Gregory, if, if you would like, you know, our office can work with you on that ordinance language, or if Councilmember Carlson, that is, it is your, your thing, so if you wanna work with Ms. Gregory instead, then we, how soon could we bring that ordinance forward?
Well, I think that's, you know, obviously, if council makes the motion, I will be working on it, but I think there are a couple moving parts here. There's the language drafting itself, there's any staff implications with both Ms. Phelan's input and Mr. Campbell's input. So, you know, when, when we are looking to draft an ordinance, one of the considerations is that it will apply to everybody in the city, is this going to apply just for this year, are you looking to include future hurricane properties that are impacted by future hurricanes? So, I would ask for a little bit of time to consider all of these things.
Okay, and, and I, I think that we are talking about this hurricane, I don't think that we can.
Well, are you talking, you're talking about Milton and Helene?
Yeah.
Like, there are two, you know, there's a couple.
The, the past, not the future. We're talking about the past and not the future.
From September?
Yes.
Twenty, whatever it was.
Twenty twenty-four.
Forward.
So, Helene and Milton.
Yeah, the date of Helene, I think.
Yeah, so the, but, because if there are other hurricanes where people had fifty-one percent of damage?
And that's kind of what I'm suggesting, is that if we're, you know, hurricane season isn't over this year.
Correct, yeah.
So, we don't, I, I would suggest some time for all of us to think about some of these things, I mean, you know, I'd certainly hear your request, but we don't wanna be changing this ordinance every year.
Okay, so, again, though, I, I think it's, and I don't think it would apply to the hurri, i- if people had hurricane damage tomorrow, because we changed the ordinance in April. We're talking about the past, we are not talking about the future. The future is two hundred and whatever dollars, that's the future, that is, but.
That clarification is very helpful.
And, and, and because we're also looking to close the loophole on no sidewalks on the street, that hasn't happened yet, so that might be something we have to change, and I really, I appreciate your willingness to do this, because I know it's difficult, and I know, but, but if what we can do today is say that we're moving forward on an ordinance that might only be passed and be viable for a month, that's okay, because if we put that, that notification that we will allow people to get money back if they were part of that fifty-one percent and paid it, and they can get, that, that, I think, solves that problem, and people can say, okay, council is working on this ordinance, and if I have to pay this money, I will get it back, or, so, so that is what I'm, that is what I think we're trying to do.
I have, I have a question, Ms. Phelan.
Yep.
So, after the hurricanes, administratively, we waived fees, that didn't come before council, correct?
So, we waived permit fees.
Right.
Okay, I wanna be clear on that, and that was done under the executive order that Governor DeSantis and the mayor and the local, so we had a state executive order, and then we had a local, which allowed us that opportunity. That ended at the beginning of March. At that time, the day it ended, I asked City Attorney Zelman, I said, I, I can't just turn this off tomorrow if somebody walks in our office, so can we please put a notice up that says, starting March first, I think it, I'm sorry, it ended in February, starting March first, which was roughly like fourteen days after it ended, we will end doing the permit fees. And she legally was okay with that, and informing the public in that manner. So, that's when we went back, March first, I believe, and put everything back in, because we did not have the authority to waive the permit fees. We never waived the sidewalk and lufy's, because those are a fee that you have elected to pay in terms of your permitting activity. Like, we never waived, we never waived impact fees or school fee, like, we only had the ability to waive the permit fee.
Gotcha. Okay, so, it's, it's probably impractical to figure out a, a administrative way of handling this, it sounds like, okay. Councilman Carlson.
Yeah, is, isn't it possible to amend an ordinance, instead of, I mean, is it, you create an ordinance to amend an ordinance, but instead of rewriting the whole thing, we can just create amendment, kind of like a Scrivener's error thing?
That's, I think that's, yeah, what we're thinking about.
Yeah, it would not be a Scrivener's error, it would be a rewrite. It would be, yeah, an amendment.
Can I, yeah, just using it as an example. Can I try to make a motion and see?
Go for it.
Motion.
Does it go to the fee schedule? No, this would just be.
Because the fee is in the fee schedule, that's why I'm just thinking through this.
Let me, let me try this and see what you all think. And there's a lot of other detail we can add in here, but let me just try this. Motion to ask city staff to return on, we'll pick a date.
November sixth.
November sixth.
Is that too early?
Part of what I hear you saying is this would be retroactive, so it's not stopping anybody, and, and what I'll ask my team to do this afternoon is go back and actually see how many right now we might be refunding if that went back, and what that, what those actual numbers look like.
Let's, let's go for November sixth, and you have to continue it, because you, you can always continue, let's start with November sixth.
So, so, motion to ask city staff to return on November sixth with a draft ordinance amendment to enable homeowners whose homes were damaged by Milton and Helene.
Fifty-one percent or more.
Damage fifty-one percent or more by Milton or, and Helene to be grandfathered into the old sidewalk rate.
Fee table, is that what this is called?
Until December thirty-one, two, twenty, twenty-five.
I'll support it, but, but we need, we need to add something about a retroactive.
He did, he said retroactive.
Oh, okay, you did say retroactive?
I didn't say retroactive, but I just said, it's a blanket thing for anybody.
It was affected by.
It says, to enable homeowners whose homes were damaged fifty-one percent or more by Milton or Helene to be grandfathered into the old sidewalk rate.
Sidewalk fee, the fee table.
Twenty-nine dollars a linear foot.
Twenty-nine dollars?
Twenty-nine dollar a linear foot.
December thirty.
Until December thirty-first.
Twenty twenty-five.
Twenty twenty-five.
We have a motion from Councilman Carlson, and we have a second from Councilman Miranda. Ms. Phelan, did you have something to add before you voted? Was that good?
No, no, I'll, I'll wait, thank you.
Okay, okay, we have a motion from Councilman Carlson, a second from Councilman Miranda, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, ayes have it unanimously, Councilwoman Hertek.
And I will, I will take on the part of working with you all. I know that you're going to go ahead and send it to all council members before, so, but I'm, I'm happy to work with you on that.
And then, I would just say, in relation to your other concern.
Yes.
Then, that would be a separate motion as to how you would like to handle that in looking at twenty-two, one oh three and the criteria associated with paying fee and lufy.
So, let's try that. I would, I make a motion to have staff come back, and I'm also gonna put that November sixth date, and again, if it needs to be changed, that's fine, like, there's no, or, I'm sorry. Okay, so, how about December, I can just tell by your face, just, no, and that's totally fine, that's, that's why.
I would like to prioritize what you would like first, and then, because I do feel that you're gonna have a bar, a more robust discussion on the second matter, and I think allowing TBBA and allowing us to let some of our advisory groups know that you're gonna have this further discussion, and here's what you're looking at, I think would be beneficial.
Well, well, I'm gonna ask staff to come back December fourth with initial conversation, not an ordinance, but initial conversation about twenty-two dash one oh three.
C one.
C one.
And can you make that for mobility? I, mobility would be lead on that, so I just want.
Yeah, so, sorry, I, I just said staff in general, so, I'll, that way you all can decide where it goes. So, section twenty-two dash one oh three C, subsection one, whether there is no existing sidewalk to which the proposed sidewalk can connect, we would like to talk about taking out that provision, but also allowing for a provision if there's a sidewalk across the street, so we need to have that conversation, so that, that is my motion.
Is it, you wanna tighten it up, or is that, could you, did you capture enough of that? Okay, good.
Well, the motion is to, to have them come back with some suggestions.
I just wanna make sure.
Before we go out to the community and have conversations.
I, I get your intent, I was just worried about them capturing that in writing.
I think it will be helpful, because I have the data from the last two years to be able to support how many have actually used that exception, and whether that is the predominant exemption, and I also have the addresses and the map, so I think we have a good starting point on that.
Wonderful, thank you.
Good discussion, we have a motion from Councilwoman Hertek, a second from Councilman Maniscalco, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, ayes have it unanimously. Councilman Vera, would you like to do the last little bit of business before we break for lunch?
Yes, sir, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. For item seventy-one, I say, because Ms. Phelan's here on this, I, I don't think, and I apologize, I was late to council today.
We continue that to ten twenty-three.
Then, there you go, okay.
No, very good, okay. So, we have a, a time certain at one-thirty, we have another issue coming at one-thirty, and then, and then we'll have new business, so if you guys could be in your seats and ready to go at one-thirty, we are on break for lunch.